This is Bloomington City Council Regular Session, July 21 of 2021. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Rallo.
Here.
Um, Rosenbarger?
Here.
Scambolory?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Clarity?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Sandberg?
Here.
And just to be sure, Councilmember Volin is not here? Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll now move to Agenda Summation. And for today's meeting, we will have approval of minutes, if any, but I think there are none. We'll then move to reports, of which a maximum of 20 minutes will be set aside for each part of this section. First, we'll have reports from council members, if any. Then we'll have a report from the mayor and city offices, and it will be the report on the results of the city survey. Next, we will have a report from council committees, if any, and then we will have public comment. Then we'll move on to appointments to boards and commissions, if any. We have legislation for second readings and resolutions this evening. Resolution 21-24 to urge the United States Congress to pass the Protecting the Right to Organize Act. Then we'll move to Resolution 21-25 to adopt a community investment plan detailing the use of funding provided under the American Rescue Plan Act, or known as by acronym ARPA, to support the city of Bloomington's recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic. Then we have legislation for first readings. It will be appropriation ordinance 21-01 to appropriate from that ARP Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, the IFA, I believe that stands for Indiana Finance Authority, the IFA Coronavirus Relief Fund, the General Fund, and Parks and Recreation General Fund expenditures for purposes that fulfill the intent of the American Rescue Plan Act in aid of the city of Bloomington's recovery from the effects of COVID-19 emergency. Then we'll move on to additional public comment, where a maximum on the second phase, a maximum of 25 minutes is set aside for this section. Then we'll move on to matters of council schedule, and then we will adjourn. Before we move forward, I will remind members of the public that members may, of the public, may speak on matters of community concern not listed on the agenda at one of the two public comment opportunities. Citizens may speak at one of these periods, but not both. Speakers are allowed five minutes. This allotment may be reduced by the presiding officer if numerous people wish to speak. So, thank you all very much. We have no minutes to approve this evening, so we'll move down to council reports. Do believe we have at least one this evening. Councilmember Piedmont Smith, is this the time?
Sure. Um, thank you, President Sims. Yes, I wanted to give a brief report about my attendance at the Making Cities Livable International Conference, and let me see if I can share my screen. Can you see that, President Sims?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, so this was a conference held in Carmel, June 8 through the 11th. I was there for two days, June 9th and 10th, and it was very interesting, so I want to just share some of what I learned there. Um, so the, the international Making Cities Livable organization has a mission of improving social and physical health, enhancing well-being, and strengthening community by increased civic participation in our cities and towns. It was founded in 1985 by Henry and Suzanne Leonard. Sociologist, Henry was a sociologist, Suzanne was an architect. And it brings together architects, urban planners, elected officials, developers, scholars, and economic development professionals from throughout the world, mostly from the United States. And, let me see. There we go. So, then, some of the themes discussed this year included retrofitting suburbia, lessons from the pandemic, climate change mitigation and adaptation, urban revitalization, reimagining public space, which is also related to lessons from pandemic, and healthy cities. So, the intersection of public space and how it's used in public health. So, um, one of the main themes, of course, and this was the first conference many of us had been to in person in a long time. So, the, the pandemic was at the forefront, and we talked about, you know, some, several of the discussions of the, the presenters and the panelists talked about the, the immediate impacts, including, you know, the reduction of people walking around in downtown areas, and how that really hit, hit home financially. And one presenter also shared that, anecdotally, it was related to an increase in crime, in violent crime, in 2020. That, that's not through a scholarly study, but that, that's something that people just observed and thought there was a connection. Um, and during the pandemic, it really became clear how streets and sidewalks are public space, and how they became more important and more used, really, because it, it became one of the only areas where people could interact in person. So, just like in Bloomington, many places blocked off roads for outdoor dining. Parking spaces were converted into public spaces as well for dining or for art displays or other purposes. As far as the health impacts, well, it's a pandemic, but mental health was also greatly impacted, as we know, and that led people to, you know, seek interactions where they could, so that they also contributed to the street life. And it, it, the pandemic showed the importance of connectivity, both human connectivity and the connectivity of our street and pedestrian and bicycle network as people got out and tried to, to get around just for exercise and the change of scene when they couldn't go and be sociable in, in normal ways. So, uh, so I, I'm just paraphrasing here, but one of the presenters noted that when you start to walk on the street and hang out on the street, it builds trust. And so you're no longer suspicious of people you don't know walking in your neighborhood. So, this happened a lot during the pandemic. There were just more people out walking, so it wasn't like, why does that person doing walking? It was more like, oh, well, I'm out walking too, and this is good. And so, sharing that, that space was, was a big result of the pandemic. Climate change, of course, has been an issue for this conference for, for many years. The ICLM International, I, IMCL, sorry, has, as its basis, you know, livability, making cities livable. And from the get-go, that has always meant making them more walkable. And of course, more walking means less driving, means a reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. So, kind of from its inception, this organization was addressing climate change in a way, as far as walkability. But a lot of the discussion was about redevelopment, big box retail and mall spaces, reclaiming them for residential development and tearing up parking lots and reclaiming green space, transit-oriented development as well, you know, developing around corridors where buses or, or local trains and other sorts of transit exist. Increasing residential density, of course, we had our, our own big discussions about that in the spring, but there was talk of missing middle housing, of allowing more people to live in each house to make better use of the prime space that is walkable. And there was consensus, and this has come up here locally as well, that ADUs are sort of the low-hanging fruit to allow people to have accessory dwelling units. There was talk of improving connectivity in the suburbs, which of course traditionally have been built, you know, with little cul-de-sacs and, and lack of connectivity, so a lot of that is being reconsidered now. And then there was some emphasis on equity as well, as climate change and environmental impacts in general hit communities disproportionately. There was a lot of, of course, a lot of the projects that were highlighted had a, a public input component. And so there was some, some tips on when local governments undertake projects, how to get public input. To the right, you see a couple of the presenters who talked about this. And the importance of having input at the ground level, and not just in response to a proposal. Listen first, don't presume you have to educate the public, but take their perspective from where they're coming from, and ask people to bring their gifts to the table. I like that, that notion that everybody has a gift to bring. Everybody has expertise that can help a project develop in the best way possible. And then put yourself on the same playing field and emphasize that we're all members of the same community. Of course, as usual with this conference, there were a lot of case studies. It pictured here is the co-author of Retrofitting Suburbia, which is where a lot of these case studies are highlighted. Some of them on the list are in that book, but others are just from other presenters. You know, everything from reclaiming big box stores to putting multi-lane roads on a diet to make them more passable and more usable for multiple modes of transportation. Again, reclaiming a mall and making it a, a green space, an amphitheater. Right here in Indiana, there's a great example up in Muncie, where the library had an extra parcel of land next door, and they created a community garden with a, a shared kitchen. And, and then Carmel itself, of course, is a case study. They have done massive development with, with public funds, with TIF money mostly. And it's, um, it's very pretty, yeah. In, in my view, it, it feels a little bit artificial because it's such a new community, and it, it didn't grow as organically as Bloomington has, but, but there are some examples of, of what public investment can do. So, just a few quotes, and again, you know, I, I do take copious notes, but I obviously didn't record these, so these are, you know, paraphrased, but it's food for thought. Public space is not a resource exhausted by shared use, but is constituted by the quality and character of the sharing. I like that. That was David Brain from New College in Florida. Excuse me. And then from Vicusmeta, who, who studies the street as a public space, he said the pandemic saw increased agency of individuals, while the agency of local governments and community entities decreased. So I thought that was an interesting way to look at the impacts of the pandemic. Public space is the connective tissue of cities. There was a lot of, there were a lot of analogies of the city as an entity, as a, as a living thing. And, uh, public space is essential, because it connects the private spaces. And, uh, this one just is a lot, is, is maybe kind of controversial, but I, I wrote it down because it was very interesting to me. What's worse than gentrification? No gentrification. So, this idea that, uh, you know, I, gentrification does have its drawbacks, but at least people are putting, investing money in our cities through this. So, you know, um, things to think about. So, um, the, the conference was really worthwhile. I, I would recommend it. It was nice that it was close by, so it was easy to get to in Carmel. Somewhat preaching to the choir, of course, everybody was already kind of speaking the same language as far as urban, urban investment and the importance of, of multimodal transportation and, and things like that. But still, good, good ideas were shared, and a lot of my questions were like, oh, okay, that's wonderful. How did you fund that? So, that's always a, an ongoing question and not an easy one to answer. So, anyway, I, I just wanted to share that with you all. If you have any questions, you can ask me now, or we can, you know, you know how to reach me.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. Do we have any questions for, from our colleagues? Okay, I, I do have one, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, and I know this will be just your opinion and based on what you saw or heard or learned in the conference, but with the idea that it, that no gentrification is worse than gentrification. And I'm not so sure I understand that when you look through the lens of what it does from an equity standpoint, in particular with most neighborhoods or housing areas that are gentrified. So what are your feelings on that particular statement?
Well, it was interesting because it was kind of, you know, in, it, it wasn't the main topic of discussion at all. It was just kind of, by the way, side, kind of a statement. So, I can't really tell you in what, in what context it was meant. I believe actually it was, oh, when we were talking about public input and ways to kind of sell the idea of change and, and making changes in development in, in cities. But I, I think it's, you know, I would say at face value, I would say, no, it's not that simple, you know? It's just not that simple, and I think there are definitely drawbacks to what we normally consider gentrification that, that need to be planned for and avoided.
Okay, thank you. I just want to hear your thoughts on that, and I do value your position, so I just was a little confused with that, that statement. I see Deputy Mayor Griffin had his hand up. I don't know if it's, well, actually, do we have any other questions from any of my colleagues? Okay. Mr. Luke, or I'm sorry, Mr. Clarity? I do believe we have a question from the deputy mayor. Is that proper during this format?
I'm okay. It was an accident. I'm good.
Oh, okay. Oh, we'd be happy to hear from you, but I just want to make sure we follow the proper process. Okay, thank you very much, and thank you for that report, Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
I think Councilmember Volin, I'm sorry, I think Councilmember Volin's hand is up.
I have a report. I'm not asking questions, so.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Again, thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. Councilmember Volin, report, please.
Yes, thank you. Just a brief thing to welcome everyone back from recess and to note that we are still meeting remotely in July. And I think that, that may have been shrewd because cases of the Delta variant are back on the rise. So even though we're scheduled to be meeting in person in August, it's let this meeting being entirely on Zoom be a sign that we're not out of the woods yet, and that everyone should be paying attention to the recommendations for how to conduct ourselves in the next few weeks when paying attention to such things will be most critical. We don't want to go into a third lockdown. That's all. Thank you all very much.
Did anyone else just lose, Jim?
He, he seems to be frozen.
May I just go ahead and offer a report with anyone of Jack while we, while Jim dials back in? Just to let everybody know and to extend an invitation, my first Saturday's constituent meeting, the next one is scheduled for Saturday, August 7. I had planned on it being an in-person one, but I think we're going to do Zoom one more time and then reevaluate after that. But again, that's Saturday, it, or excuse me, August 7 at 1:30 PM. If you go to sueforcitycouncil.com, all you need to do, you'll see a big button that says join, and all you need to do is click on that. So, thank you.
If I can, I, I just.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Councilmember Volin and Councilmember Scambolory. I do apologize, getting the message that my internet is unstable, and I was.
Oh, you froze again, Jim.
Madam Vice President, you want to just go ahead down the roll for the council reports?
I, I think we may want to do that, and Jim, just cut me off if you can hear me whenever you're back in. So, are you back in?
I think so. I don't know how long.
Okay.
Can you hear, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Last I heard, we were going to Councilmember Smith.
Oh, thank you. I just butted in there since we were freezing off and on. I just wanted to say that, uh, myself and Councilmember Piedmont Smith and Councilmembers Scambolory, we went over to the Boys and Girls Club, local legislators, little get-together at the wagon wheel the other day, and Jeff Baldwin gave us a great presentation and took a look at the Crestmont Club, and what a wonderful thing to do, and they've, they've done such a wonderful job during the pandemic and are continuing to do that and to practice safe procedures. And I just wanted to give a shout out to the Boys and Girls Club and thank them for, for having us in. It was real nice.
Thank you very much for that report, Councilmember Smith. Do we have any further, Councilmember Sandberg?
Thank you. As we are talking about community gathering spaces being the fabric that kind of holds any community together, I do appreciate Councilmember Piedmont Smith's report about that. And I also join with Councilmember Volin in the concerns about our getting back together. I know during our hiatus, many of us enjoyed making lunch meetings for the first time, those of us that have been fully vaccinated. That has been wonderful, getting out to performance venues. I bought my first ticket at the Buskirk-Chemling Theater for an event I want to see in October, and had a constituent meeting on Saturday that was live and in person in the McCloskey Room, and that felt fabulous to be meeting with people face-to-face and not in a Zoom room. That said, the variant is a big, serious deal. And so if I could just make one more appeal to the public, and I'm sure I'm joined by all my colleagues on this council, please get your vaccinations. If you have any hesitancy or if you feel misinformed, please seek education, get those vaccinations, because until we all do, until more of us are, are vaccinated, we're going to have this issue with the Delta strain, reinfecting our community and causing us to shut down all over again. And those of us that are getting a taste of freedom and are looking forward to having more in-person meetings with our colleagues and our friends and our families, it's a simple thing to do, and so I, I'm making a real public appeal here for everyone to please do your civic duty, get those vaccinations if you possibly can. Thanks.
You're here.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandberg. Do we have anything else from the other council members? Councilmember Rallo?
Thank you. Yeah, I have three observations to make at this meeting. My first is to offer gratitude to the administration for making good on their commitment to to install bike lanes on Serra Road. This was a matter of debate at council, I think about a year ago, and this is between Covenantor and Moore Spike. And we, we wondered if we should actually impose it legislatively. The committee, the administration said informally that they would commit to do it, and, and they've done it both on the north and southbound lanes of Serra Road. So, thank you, thank you for that. Also, further appreciation, I see that the, the city is expanding mulching programs. This is of leaf mulching, and some of us have been advocating. I, I've been talking about it for about 15 years, and I'm glad that this administration is moving forward on it. There was a pilot project last year of 22 households, and now they're aiming for a thousand this year for households to attempt to keep leaves from being vacuumed up in the fall. I think it's important for several reasons. One is it's costly to vacuum them up. Secondly, there's, they block storm drains, which we know is a, a very terrible thing and, and a, in a very, during downpours. They build soils for yards, and so they're, it's an ecologically sound practice. And I would go further to say that if the administration would consider that we still have not, not a predominant, but approximately 35 or 40%, of our waste stream is organic material from kitchen waste, that perhaps we should consider distributing composters to yards as well. So when people start composting these leaves, they can, they can start using them in their composters with kitchen waste. And then my last comment is, is unfortunately a regret. It's a regret concerning surrendering our role in development proposals. And this came to a head with the Kmart site, the Trinitas Development, which evolved to a 906-bedroom, predominantly student development, 400-space parking garage on the periphery of the city. Really not a very good development. I rated a, a D+. I think it gets a, that plus because it included Blooming Foods. Well, that's a very good thing. And it does offer some green space, but it is, the renderings, it looks aesthetically challenged, so it's going to be another bland, ugly development. It lacks affordability, which is something that we, we need in, in that area. And it offers zero range in housing types. It, it essentially is our apartments. So, this is not what we need. It's certainly not what we desire as a community. It's a consequence, really, of surrendering our, our role in the process, the council's role in the PUD process, which would require demonstrable public good, and we could determine that based upon, well, our findings, for, for instance, affordability for the community. So, I would recommend that Planning and Transportation evaluate this lost opportunity and come to council with advice on how we remedy it, so it doesn't occur again in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo. I do apologize to my colleagues and the public, and we all had that time period. This is our first meeting back after break, and I do appreciate everyone's report. Okay, seeing no more. We do now have report from the mayor and city offices, which is a report on the results of the city survey. Who do we have here to present?
I think maybe, can you hear me?
Yes.
I think I, I kind of started off, and, and then we go from there, and I, and, and I think we have a, a guest here, if I'm not mistaken.
Mr. Griffin, if you don't mind, just stating your name and position for the record as well.
Okay. I'm Don Griffin, and I am the Deputy Mayor for the city of Bloomington. It's my pleasure to introduce this evening a presentation of our third citywide annual survey results. A little background at first, we have contracted with the National Research Center, which has merged with another company with which you may be familiar, Polco, to conduct surveys about what it feels like to live in Bloomington. The quality of life, city services, amenities, housing, and more. Every other year since, or since 2017, we look at our results and compare them with previous survey results we have received from our residents. we look at our results and compare them with previous survey results we have received from our residents as well as those responses from other communities similar to ours. The results from these surveys are extremely valuable. We share them with the community so city government, county government, nonprofits and local businesses can see what our residents perceive as going well and what we as a community need to work to improve. Staff refers to these surveys result, survey results to inform decisions regularly. Please allow me to introduce Damae Ma Man, Director of National Engagement for NRC Polco. Damae Ma will present an overview of the survey process and the results from the 2021 survey. We will be happy to take your questions following Damae Ma's presentation. And now I would like to turn it over to Damae Ma. And I hope I said your name correctly, so.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Great. Can everybody hear me and and see the slideshow?
Yes.
Perfect. Great. Thank you very much. Well, as the Deputy Mayor said, I'm I am with National Research Center and and Polco. We merged in 2019, and we have been working with the City of Bloomington as National Research Center since 2017. And I believe the city's relationship with Polco goes back to about then as well. So we're we're thrilled to kind of bring everything under one roof, offering both an online civic engagement platform and National Research Center brings over two decades of experience conducting scientific surveys for local governments across the country. The 2021 survey, as the Deputy Mayor noted, was the was the third survey that we have conducted for the city. This survey was a scientific survey using all best practices in survey research. We mailed to a random scientific sample of 3,000 households within city limits. We received back 527 total completed surveys for a response rate of 19%. That's a well within the average range for this type of study and on par with response rates of that for past surveys we've conducted for the city. That gives us a margin of error of plus or minus 4% around the data, which is terrific. Typically with this type of study, the overall goal is to get to a plus or minus 5% margin of error is a best practice. So this this level of precision was was even slightly better. So that's that's excellent. We also scientifically weight the data to help ensure that it's as representative of the community as a whole as possible. If you have had a chance to look at the this year's report, or when you do, you'll see that there's it's very robust. There's a lot to it. In the interest of time tonight, I'll only be focusing on our on our key findings. But just wanted to briefly mention that you can look in the report and see results broken out by geography. And that was by quadrants of the city, by some of the socio demographic questions on the survey. So you can look at differences in in results by length of residency in the city, homeownership, gender, age, student status, those sorts of items. Also, we have created a very robust benchmarking database and created an average rating for many of the items on the survey. So we're able to tell you if Bloomington's ratings are higher than, lower than, or similar to that average rating. And also, of course, the trends over time comparing Bloomington to Bloomington is probably the most valuable thing to be able to do. And I'll be talking more about both the benchmarks and the trends. This is just a rough schematic of our national benchmarking database. It's the largest of its kind. We have more than 500 communities across the US that comprise this database to help make up those national averages. When I refer to the national benchmark comparison, I'm talking about the national average based on all of the communities in our benchmarking database. And we also compared Bloomington's results to a subset of peer communities as identified by city staff. These communities, there were 27 of of them. You can see them here on this slide. They tend to be university communities and or communities with similar house annual median incomes. So now I'll go through the key findings that that we as researchers found in the report. There's of course a lot more data than what I'm going to get into. But as I said, in the interest of time, here are the highlights that that we found. Overall, it's it's very clear that Bloomington residents continue to have a very high quality of life. The perception of quality in life by Bloomington residents was rated as 79% excellent or good. Most of the evaluative questions on the survey are asked on a scale of excellent, good, fair or poor. And most of the graphs you'll see in the report and on the slides tonight show the percentage excellent and good combined. So 79% giving very high marks to overall quality of life. This was similar to the national and peer benchmark comparisons and stable over time. When looking at perceptions of community quality, residents had very high opinions of all of these aspects of of Bloomington. The city has a place to live, as a place to visit, as a place to raise children and to their own neighborhoods. At least about three quarters giving or more giving excellent or good ratings to each of these aspects. These were similar to the benchmarks and also tended to be stable over time. About 81% of respondents said they were very or somewhat likely to recommend living in Bloomington to someone that asked. And about six in 10 plan to remain in Bloomington for the next five years. The rate of those that were would recommend living in the city was stable over time and similar to benchmarks. And those that would remain in Bloomington for the next five years was stable over time, lower than benchmarks, but perhaps, you know, not uncommon, given that it's a university community. When looking at perceptions of community care and acceptance, at least six in 10 gave excellent or good marks to the job the city does at making all residents feel welcome, to attracting people from diverse backgrounds and to valuing and respecting residents from diverse backgrounds. These ratings were similar to the benchmarks, and 2021 was the first year these questions were added to the survey. So there's no trend data for these items yet. There were two open-ended questions on the survey where residents are asked to write in their responses in their own words. One question asked folks what they liked best about living in the city. And one question asked respondents what they liked least about living in the city. But when asked about what they liked best about living in Bloomington, you can see in the report, you can see the full verbatim responses to the open-ended questions. But we also summarize them into categories to look at the most common themes to try and help interpret the results. So these were the items that were cited the most often about what people liked the best about living in Bloomington. The most commonly cited item had to do with parks and recreation and natural environment of the city, followed by a sense of community and a small town feel. The next key finding is that it's clear that residents feel safe in the community overall. However, police interactions could be a potential area of focus. When looking at perceptions of safety in Bloomington, 72% of respondents rated the overall feeling of safety in the city as excellent or good. And then when asked how safe they felt in specific areas during the day and at night, you can see that almost all felt very or somewhat safe during the day, both in their neighborhoods and downtown. Those ratings dropped a little bit at at night. That's not uncommon that folks feel report higher feelings of safety during the day than they than they do at night. These ratings were all stable over time and similar to the benchmark comparisons. These questions were new in 2021, asking about some additional perceptions of feelings of safety. 85% of respondents said they were very or somewhat safe from fire, flood or other natural disasters. About three quarters reporting that they felt very or somewhat safe from violent crime. And about six in 10 felt safe from property crime. And these were similar to the benchmark comparisons. And again, no trend data on these yet as they were new. These perceptions of safety services were very high, about nine in 10 giving excellent or good ratings to fire services and ambulance or EMS services. About three quarters giving excellent or good marks to fire prevention and education. These were also similar to the benchmarks. Ratings for ambulance and EMS declined slightly from 2019 to 2021, and the others were stable. We did see a few declines in in some safety services in 2021. This could be due to either some of the the national unrest or local events can also certainly have an impact on ratings. This data was collected in March and April of this year, I should note as well. Ratings for police services did did decrease in 2021. This is the lowest we've seen yet since we started asking this this question in 2017. Ratings are now 60% excellent or good for police services, and that was lower than the national benchmark comparison. Ratings for crime prevention decreased in 2021 compared to 2019, but are on par with the benchmark rating, the original rating in 2017. That rating is also lower than the benchmark. And then also asking about resident interaction with police department. That rating is also at a at a lower rate in 2021 than in past years. So this is potential area for for improvement or could be a reflection of of the times, given everything that has been going on in the last year, not only with the pandemic, but also with with other national and local events. The next key finding is that residents did express concerns about housing and affordability. Bloomington is certainly not alone in this, especially given, you know, given the pandemic and concerns about unstable economic futures. We've also seen, you know, an uptick in in folks being concerned about affordable healthcare, availability of affordable childcare and preschool. In many instances, there there weren't options for that in the last year. You know, of course, that that varied in communities, but certainly if if you have to keep your kids home, you're going to give that a lower rating. Availability of affordable mental health care, well-planned residential growth and availability of affordable housing options. These ratings all received, you know, about a third or less, giving excellent or good ratings to these aspects and to their perception of them, and they tended to be lower than the benchmark comparisons as well. When looking at how ratings changed for these items in 2021 compared to 2019, you can see that many of them were declining. As I mentioned, this could be a combination of factors and certainly should be taken into account that you were collecting data during the pandemic. Will be, it's great that Bloomington has trend data, two years of trend data from, you know, before the pandemic so that we can see, you know, can we infer that this is a direct result of that? Will we see these ratings bounce back in 2023? You know, if so, how much? And, you know, where it'll also depend on on where we are then, of course, there's still a lot of uncertainty in the future. But it's great that you have you have this, you know, the pre-pandemic benchmarks to refer to. I mentioned earlier that there were some open-ended questions where folks were able to write in their own responses about what they liked least and what they liked most about living in the city. When asking them about what they liked least, affordable housing came up quite a bit. And also some other folks wrote in comments that had to do with lack of job opportunities, economic vitality and and a higher cost of living. The next key finding is that addressing homelessness is an increasing priority for residents. When that question about what folks like least about living in Bloomington, the a number one item that folks wrote in and talked about in in their comments did have to do with individuals experiencing homelessness. And so about 29% of those that wrote in responses mentioned that when they were talking about what they liked least about living in the city. Also, ratings for taking care of vulnerable residents, this was a a new question in 2021, I believe. So there is not trend data. However, you can see only about a third gave excellent or good ratings to the job the city is doing at taking care of vulnerable residents, and that was lower than the national benchmark comparison. The city has been asking on past surveys and and this year if residents think that homelessness is a challenge in the city. And you can see this is a scale of not a challenge, minor challenge, moderate challenge or major challenge. In 2021, there was a big jump up in folks citing 74% said that it's a major challenge. So it's definitely being perceived as more of an issue this year than in 2019. They're also asked if they would support or oppose the city assisting supportive housing for residents who are experiencing homelessness. And, you know, you can see that the it was perceived to be a bigger issue in 2021. And also, there is stronger support for the city taking some action in 2021 compared to 2019. 75% strongly support that versus 63% in 2019. There was still good, solid support for it in 2019 as well, but increased support now. The next key finding is that we did see that some government performance ratings declined in 2021, which could potentially highlight some opportunities for improvement and better connection with residents. When looking at the perception of the overall quality of services provided by the city, 73% gave that excellent or good rating in 2021. That is a decrease overall since 2017. It's on par with 2019, but overall, it's it's been trending downwards. However, it's still a strong rating and similar to national and peer benchmark communities. But could be, you know, it could be one of those as a result of the pandemic or a potential area for watchful waiting. But we did see some other aspects of government performance decreasing in 2021 compared to 2019. All of these items for which there were comparison data available decreased in 2021 compared to 2019, with the exception of value of services for taxes paid to the city. That did remain stable. About, you know, a majority gave excellent or good ratings to to those you see on the left-hand side here. About 47% or or fewer gave excellent or good ratings to the others. Even even while these were decreasing and, you know, a lot of them are rated as excellent or good by fewer than half of the respondents, they still mostly tended to be similar to the national benchmarks. These are just items that don't get as high ratings from residents as as other things on on surveys like this, which is why the benchmarks can be helpful, but it is worth noting that most of them are trending down. And ratings for treating all residents with respect and treating all residents fairly were lower than the benchmarks. We also asked respondents if they had had contact with Bloomington staff and if they had to then rate that contact in the last 12 months. About four in 10 said that they had contacted Bloomington's staff. That rate of contact was on par with past surveys. And then when asked to rate that contact, you can see that some of these ratings are trending down in 2021 compared to 2019. They are still all rated as excellent or good by at least two thirds of respondents. So it's still a strong majority giving positive ratings, but they but they are trending down. The final key finding is that it's very clear that education, arts and culture contribute to that strong positive quality of life in Bloomington. We saw extremely high ratings, at least eight in 10 respondents gave excellent or good ratings to community support for the arts. Overall opportunities for education and enrichment, adult educational opportunities, and even during a pandemic to opportunities to attend cultural arts and music activities. That item did trend down in 2021 compared to 2019, which, you know, I would assume that there were likely less opportunities during a pandemic for things like that, but folks still had a very positive impression of it overall. These ratings tended to be higher than the benchmarks, and some of these ratings were actually among the highest in our benchmarking database. Ratings for community support for the arts, overall opportunities for education and enrichment and adult educational opportunities were all among some of the highest ranked ratings in our benchmarking database. And again, just echoing that in that open-ended question where we asked people what they liked less the most about living in Bloomington. They, a lot of them really cited entertainment and cultural activities in the city and access to educational opportunities. So it's clear that that is part of the fabric of the community and the community's identity. And then it's something that's very much enjoyed by residents. I just wanted to, getting ready to wrap it up and open up for questions, just would like to encourage you and and let you all know. We've been working with city staff on this as well, but you do have full access to Polco. We have integrated our offerings of Polco and NRC. So if you want to dig more deeply into some of the findings from this survey, we can help get get the word out. You can use the platform to continue to engage residents. You have about 750 residents that are currently subscribing to Bloomington's platform profile on on the Polco platform. So you have some kind of some built-in outreach opportunities there for you. So now I'd love to open it up to questions.
Okay, can you clear the screen, please?
Yes.
Thank you. And thank you for that presentation, presenter man, in the intro from Deputy Mayor Griffin. Okay, questions from councils. I see Councilmember Rollo.
Thank you, Ms. Man. Regarding your, the topic of affordability, this was seen as a problem by community residents. Is is this different than compared to peer communities or national average? Are they all experiencing affordability problems, or is this particularly concerning for Bloomington uniquely?
The ratings do tend to be lower than the benchmarks. I I would say that, you know, they they have trended down in 2021, so they they are on the on the decline from 2019. And a lot of that could be directly related to the. So they, they are on the, on the decline from 2019 and a lot of that could be directly related to the pandemic. But I would also say that in, in other high-performing communities and communities with high quality of life and lots of attractions like Bloomington has, desirable communities and livable communities. It does seem that in many of them affordability issues and, and issues with homelessness have become more pronounced in recent years. And it's, you know, it's, in some ways, I think it's an indicator of, of success. It's a desirable place. So it becomes more expensive. But, you know, it's, it's, it's striking a balance. And I think that a lot of those affordability issues have just become a lot more pronounced during the pandemic. We haven't done a meta-analysis of data just during the pandemic yet. It's on our research team's wishlist. And so it will be interesting to see if we can, if we can find some, some patterns like that across the country.
Okay, great. President Sims, I have another question, but I'll defer to someone else.
Okay, thank you. Welcome right back to you. Do we have any further questions from any other council members? Seeing, okay, Councilmember Campbell.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Man, thank you for the presentation. Very much appreciated. And I look forward to diving into the data a little bit deeper. You said 527 individuals completed the survey. I know that several of us on council made a concerted effort to push our constituents to participate, even if they weren't part of the original 3,000. I guess I'm wondering about the extent to which that worked. How many of the 527 were part of the original 3,000?
So that is, that is the scientific example. So the 527 are from that 3,000. But you're absolutely correct. There was also an open participation survey as well. And I believe there are about 250 responses to that. We did keep those responses separate and I can pull that up.
So those, the data from those 250 respondents is not reflected in the graph that you've given us or it is?
It is not.
It's not? Okay. Could it be? I mean, what would it take to actually do that? Because I think that seems like a worthwhile thing to do.
I'm just taking a look at your reports to see how we reported that for you. We have done some exploration of blending opt-in data or open participation where people are self-selecting to participate with the random scientific sample. I don't believe we did that for Bloomington this year. That would be, we would have to redo all of the analyses for, for that. Typically, we track those results separately. We still report them to you in tabular format. So you can still see them. It's of course still important to have, have people's voices be heard. But I need to check on where we have that report for you. I can follow up.
Okay, that would be great. I have another question, but I'm willing to yield to my other colleagues, so.
Thank you. Let me, I will move on to Councilmember Smith. And unless there's anyone else, we'll go back to Councilmember Rollo and then back to you, Campbell. Okay, I see one. I see Councilmember. Go ahead, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, President Sims. Ms. Man, thank you for the presentation. It was great. Of the 527, do you, do you have any, I don't know, comments or thoughts on the self-selection of who answered the questionnaire? I assume it was mostly answered through a website. And is there skewing of the data because of who answered it or who was able to answer?
So for the scientific example, folks were mailed hard copy surveys and they also were given a link to complete the survey online if they preferred. Looks like about, about 250 took the survey online and about 300 mailed the paper surveys back. And there's, there's some more additional detail about that in, in the technical appendices section of the report, the survey methodology section. But what we do with the scientific sample is it's our goal to make sure that the results are as representative of the community as a whole as possible. So that's why it's a random scientific selection when we're creating the sample. We then geocode it to make sure that all addresses fall within City of Bloomington limits. And then when we get the raw data back, we compare the sociodemographic responses to the most recent census data available for Bloomington. So we look at things like homeownership, gender, age, race, ethnicity. And then typically, and, and we did, we apply some scientific weights to the data to try and make it as accurate of a reflection of, of the community as a whole as possible. And you can see information about that weighting in, in the report.
Oh, thank you very much. I really appreciate your explanation.
Thank you. Councilmember Bowden.
Thank you. Yes, I've been looking vainly for the report in my email. Has it been sent out yet or is, is it about to be distributed?
I know that city staff does have it. I'm, I'm not sure what their plans were for, for distribution.
Well, I'm looking forward to seeing it. In the report, will it be easy for us to look at the data from other cities, for example? Or to see, I mean, is the benchmark, when you say the benchmark, is it all 27 peer cities lumped together or are they broken out at all?
There's no head-to-head comparisons. We do create an average because we do keep other jurisdictions' data confidential. So what you'll see, you'll see the charts for the national benchmark comparisons and then for the peer community comparisons. And you'll see for, for each question on the survey, there's tables. It will tell you if Bloomington was higher, lower, or similar to that average. And how many other jurisdictions asked that same question and what Bloomington's rank was. So on one of the slides I was mentioning, that's for some of the cultural opportunities and education opportunities, Bloomington had among some of the highest ratings in the database. That's the kind of information you can see there. You can see Bloomington was ranked two out of 279 jurisdictions that asked that question, you know, for example. So it provides some robust information, but not, it doesn't divulge other jurisdictions' individual level data.
Okay, if, if we wanted to break down the peer cities into two divisions, would you be able to do that instead of separately?
Potentially. We always want to make sure there's enough jurisdictions in there that we can give you robust comparisons.
That's fine.
So, so, you know, that sample, that size of that group is, is probably about as small as we would typically recommend, but it's something we could potentially explore in the future.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Rollo.
Yeah, thanks. On the topic of quality of life, I was thinking about the integral nature of, of livable communities is, is Councilmember Piedmont Smith was describing revolves around in part the built environment. So how we inhabit spaces, private, public and so forth. And I think obviously government has a role to play there, a big role. And we have to take care not to compromise that. I wondered if you had questions that were specific to the built environment? And/or if not, if you would, in the future, perhaps, you know, fashion questions so that we could determine what their perception is of how the city is, is growing and building out.
Yes, I, I do believe there are some, some questions that do directly relate to built environment. The survey we do for Bloomington is, is a, is a custom survey, which allows the city to have more customization than some of our more out-of-the-box, templatized surveys. But it's, it mirrors largely the National Community Survey, which is our, our flagship survey that we created in 2001 in partnership with ICMA. And one of the facets that we focus on in the NCS, because it's, it's designed to measure community livability as a whole, is built environment. And most of the questions on Bloomington's custom survey can map back to that. So yes, there was a question about overall built environment of Bloomington, including overall design of buildings, parks and transportation systems and some other items that would, that would map back to that. So we, we agree that that's an important thing to be measuring and the city has been doing that.
Okay, terrific. And I guess I'll be discussing with Deputy Mayor Griffin about council's participation in maybe offering questions in the future. Does the administration be open to, to questions from council that could be included in the survey?
You know, it's not my administration, but that is a question that I will run up to, to the top of the flagpole.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell.
Yes, question from Ms. Man, question for Deputy Mayor Griffin. Ms. Man, you, you mentioned that results are weighted to reflect the community. I know what that, the word weighted means in my head and thank you for making me flashback to my graduate statistics courses here. But what are some examples of the weighting that you've done for us this time?
So you can see the weighting table in, in the report, in the, in the methods section. So you can see broadly, you know, what the, what the raw data looks, what the population norm is according to the most recent census data, what the unweighted data looked like and what the weighted data looked like. But basically when we're weighting, we're applying weights to each survey record. So potentially, you know, we tend to hear from more women than men. We tend to hear from more older adults than younger adults. We tend to hear from more homeowners than renters. That's not unique to Bloomington. That's just kind of a general blanket statement. So perhaps, you know, a female homeowner in her, in her 60s, maybe her survey, instead of counting as one record, maybe it counts as 0.85. And perhaps a young Hispanic male that's a renter, maybe his response counts as 1.25. And so it's each individual record gets, gets applied at a different weight based on what we're looking to correct for. We are always cautious. We never want to over-manipulate the data or apply any weights that are too high. So it's all, it's kind of a, a blending of art and science, if you will, with, with the statistics, but done very cautiously as well.
That's very helpful. Thank you. And I'm not sure if this is Mr. Griffin or Ms. Man, but who owns the data for Bloomington?
I think we, we own the intellectual properties, the City of Bloomington. We, we purchased it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. I'm seeing any or no others. I'll ask Ms. Man a question if I may. It was interesting from the position of weighting questions. And I've been in school a long time ago, so I'm like Councilmember Campbell. I understand that. But my direct question is, with our population percentages, is that part of the weighting in your survey? For an example, if we had a thing and it was, the average was 65%, does it break it down into details from a demographic standpoint? That of African-American position, lower than median income position, males, females, that sort of thing?
So our goal with, with the weighting is to, you know, apply an accurate weight to each survey record so that the demographics will, will match as close as we can, get them to match the population norms. And then, but as in terms of looking at results broken out, you can look at results broken out by geography and by some of the sociodemographics. So there are sections in the report where you can look at the differences in results by quadrants of the city. And then also you can look at the results. It's not by every characteristic from the survey. I don't believe race was one of the items, but you can look and see if there were differences in respondents, whether they were homeowners or renters, whether they were male or female, I believe by age, whether they were not students, part-time students or full-time students. And I believe those were the variables that the city chose. So you can see results broken out that way and see if there were statistically significant differences among those subgroups.
Okay, thank you very much. I too look forward to seeing the full report. Any further question from Councilmember, Councilmember Bowden?
Yes, is it possible in arrears to, to, to check race as well? That the administration didn't choose it, but the council's concerned with it. Can we, can we get that as an addendum somehow?
We, we could potentially do that. I can certainly talk to city staff more about, you know, what, what that would look like and options for, you know, pricing and timing.
That'd be great to know. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. And I will add, if we can't do it this year, maybe in two years when we do another survey, some other things may be included. Deputy Mayor Griffin, did you have any?
No, I, I was gonna ask him which races. That, that's, that's the other question I, I wanted to ask him. Which races is he asking about?
Me?
Yeah, you.
According to the demographics of Bloomington that the census provides, whatever the census does, I don't know what, what questions respondents were asked to respond to if they specified. If there was a question that asked what race they identify as, and we can use that to contrast to the data, wouldn't that be
Okay.
useful.
Okay.
So but it's whatever, whatever the census asks.
That, that makes sense.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any further questions from council? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, presenter man. We appreciate it. And Deputy Mayor Griffin, thank you both for the presentation.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Now we'll move down to reports for council committees. Do we have any reports for council committees this evening? Okay, seeing none. We'll now, now go to public comments. I will remind folks that if you wish to speak publicly, please indicate so by using this raised hand function in Zoom and/or sending a notice to our meeting host via chat. Do we have any takers that you see, Mr. Lucas?
Not at the moment. I want to give it just another second though.
Okay.
Oh, I do have a, I'm not sure. The screen name is Jay Good and I should not be able to unmute. Thank you. Thank you very much. Can you see me okay?
Actually, no, we don't allow video, but could you please identify yourself?
I'll be there too. First of all, my name is John Goody. And thank you for allowing me to address this council. I'm a business owner in Bloomington. I've lived here with my family for over 20 years. I own MSP Manufacturing and the Goody Business Park. The Goody Business Park is located along the east border of Switchyard Park from Grimes Lane to Hillside with nine businesses operating in five buildings on five acres of land. We are also the next-door neighbor to the Bloomington Police Substation. The businesses at the Goody Business Park provide employment to around 100 people and contribute millions of dollars to the local economy. I have been a big fan of the development of Switchyard Park. Unfortunately, since its completion, we have experienced countless problems with drug abusers, vagrants, vandals, thieves and trespassers. These trespassers have robbed my tenants, damaged property, broken windows, camped out on the property, lit fires by the gas line, destroyed heating and air conditioning units, defecated on the grounds, painted graffiti on the buildings and left large amounts of trash and waste. There have been hundreds of used needles and syringes and trash throughout the grounds. Some of the trash is humanitarian meals provided by the city. One of my tenants provides ABNA and recreation therapy for children with autism. I want to make sure these children are protected and not having to worry about stepping on syringes and seeing material that is detrimental to their development. We've had trespassers sleep in our dumpsters and on our front steps. They have left empty liquor bottles, syringes, pipes and pornographic material and sex toys near our doors. We have had the Bloomington Police out to our buildings on several occasions. We've also emailed the mayor, spoke with the Department of Public Works and met with the Chamber of Commerce to try to properly address our problem with, which unfortunately plagues our city. I have spent thousands of dollars on new security systems and cleaning up the land and buildings. We have spent hundreds of hours cleaning up and trying to keep our property safe, resources that we better serve growing our businesses. I've spoken with other businesses in the area that have, that are having similar problems and concerns. The continuation of this problem will threaten all of us, causing some of us to leave and prevent other businesses from moving to or starting up in Bloomington. I know the city has also had to have people removed from city buildings. What would you do if this occurred on your property or in your backyard? What is currently being done is not working. Our police department is understaffed and have a terribly difficult job. They lack the resources and support necessary to protect our city and its citizens. War problems are arising in our shelters and mental health. War problems are arising in our shelters and mental health facilities. Other cities, towns and states are sending their problems to Bloomington and we can't solve them. I urge the city council to allocate more resources to the police to protect our citizens. Proper civil behavior and its enforcement are essential to our future. Leadership is a behavior, not a position. Leadership is not about being in charge. Leadership is about taking care of those in your charge. Please lead in protecting our citizens and our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Mr. Giddy. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Mary Morgan, and she should now be able to unmute.
Thank you. I'm Mary Morgan, Director of Advocacy and Public Policy with the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. And I would just like to amplify the remarks that John Goody made just now and to tell you that vandalism, graffiti, trash, needles, aggressive behavior and other negative issues are actually escalating in our city. It's challenging for businesses and the general public, especially in the area around Switchyard Park, South Walnut and the Beeline. I'd encourage you, if you haven't already, to spend some time in that area. And I'd encourage you to question whether the city is devoting adequate resources to our community's public safety. Businesses are being forced to spend their resources, as you heard from Mr. Goody, on fences, security cameras, security guards and staff time to clean up and repair damage done to their property. If the administration has a plan to address this situation, could the current situation, please let the community know. At this point, it seems like the city is willing to look away from the problems rather than deal with them directly and sufficiently. If that avoidance continues, these problems will only get worse. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas? And I think I should have, and now before you go, I think I should have said publicly that speakers have five minutes. So sorry about that. Who do we have next?
Next is CJ Hugel.
Hi, are you all able to hear me?
Yes.
I actually wasn't really planning on speaking today, so what I have.
I'm sorry, before you get started, can you just identify yourself, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry, my name is CJ Hugel. I'm a resident and have been for a few years now.
Thank you.
Like I said, I, I wasn't planning on speaking today. So what I'm saying isn't going to be as organized as maybe the thoughts before mine were. But in response to what Mr. Goody and what Ms. Morgan were saying, it seems like they were roundabout complaining about homelessness and the lack of a response to the homelessness issue that we are having in Bloomington. And speaking about it in a way that just assumes that police coming in can fix it. But what did we learn from last year? When Mayor Hamilton refused to stop the police from pushing homeless people from one park to another, instead of providing any effective solutions? Arresting homeless people isn't going to leave them with a place to say after they've leave jail. Punishing people for having addictions that we know from watching other cities and other nations can be dealt with if we provide the proper resources, the proper addiction help, the, the care that people need to be able to better themselves rather than just punishing them repeatedly for things that they can't control. We act like we're all safe in our homes with our jobs and that we're not just one medical bill away from homelessness, but the vast majority of people are, and I would argue probably everybody in this Zoom call here is. One mistake away or one incident that's completely out of our control away from being on the streets, just like our neighbors that we see in Switchyard Park, who by the way, were just pushed there by the police because they can't stay in Seminary Park anymore. We can't keep pushing these people around and act like that's going to solve the issue. What would I do if I saw these people in my backyard? If I had the ability to, and what we should do as a city, is provide them with a place to stay. That's what we should do. I'm tired of seeing so many nimby attitudes from people in the city of Bloomington where we act like it's a liberal paradise, like there's no issues here. We need to stop pretending like if we just push people around, the issues will go away. And we need to provide legitimate, long-term solutions that have been proven to work all around the world. And for the love of God, not give another dollar to the police. Thank you.
Thank, thank you for your comments, Mr. Hugo. Do we have anyone else, Mr. Lucas?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to appointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any appointments this evening? Councilmember Smith?
The Transportation Committee met on seven, twenty twenty-one to discuss appointment of a seat that was expiring on the Bloomington Transportation Board of Directors. And we came and interviewed a couple of great candidates. We'd like to put forth and nominate Nancy Obermeyer to be reappointed to seat C two.
Second.
Okay, thank you. It's been properly moved to second, that Ms. Nancy Obermeyer, seat, seat C two, I believe, on the Bloomington Transportation Board of Directors be appointed. For the clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Volin?
Yes.
Rosenberger?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. If you did say something?
Yes.
Thank you. Scamblory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Pete Moth Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
And Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that motion to appoint passes nine zero. Thank you, Councilmember Smith, and congratulations, Ms. Obermeyer. Do we have any further appointments to boards and commissions this evening? Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, based on the recommendation of the Climate Action and Resilience Committee, I move to appoint Shelby Ritchie to seat C three of the Bloomington Commission on Sustainability.
Second.
Okay, thank you. It's been properly moved to second, that Shelby Ritchie, seat C three. Or did you say the Climate and Resilience Committee?
The Commission on Sustainability is the commission, and it was our committee.
Very much, that's, you're quite fine. I've been properly moved to second, the clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Rosenberger?
Yeah.
Scamblory?
Yeah.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Pete Moth Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
And Volin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That appointment passes nine zero. Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty, and congratulations to Ms. Ritchie. Do we have any further appointments to boards or commissions this evening? Okay, thank you, seeing none, we'll move on into the agenda. I do believe we have legislation ready for second reading. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, Mr. President, I move that Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-four be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I was waiting, waiting on that second, thank you, been properly moved in second, the clerk, please follow the roll.
Councilmember Scamblory?
Yes, sorry, I lost internet there for a second. Yes.
Happens. Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Pete Moth Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenberger?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, and motion passes. Councilmember, will the clerk please read?
Resolution twenty-one twenty-four to urge the United States Congress to pass the Protecting the Right to Organize Act. The synopsis is as follows. This resolution is sponsored by Councilmember Sandberg and co-sponsored by all council members. It recognizes as a fundamental right, workers' ability to unionize, calls upon the United States Congress and Biden Administration to pass the Protecting the Right to Organize Act and directs the city clerk to send copies of this resolution to the Indiana Congressional delegation, delegation and the President of the United States.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty.
So I move that Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-four be adopted?
Thank you, been properly moved to second, Councilmember Sandberg, care to present?
Yes, very briefly, this was brought to our attention by Jerry Sutherland, who is the Executive Vice President of the Southern Indiana Area Labor Federation AFL-CIO. And during our recess, I was happy to take a look at this and sponsor this. I'm grateful that all members of the council are coming on board as co-sponsors. Bloomington has certainly had a rich history of being in support of labor, being in support of our friends and colleagues from what was formerly called the White River Central Labor Council that is now Southern Indiana Area Labor Federation. And we feel that with the conversation that we're all having about affordability in our communities, we also need to be mindful of wages. We need to be mindful that as the costs of living go up and we're not able to support the kinds of jobs that pay the kind of wages for people in our community to be able to afford things like housing and childcare and healthcare, that it is very, very important for us to support this, this, this act. It has passed in the House, it is in committee in the Senate. And so what this resolution does is it just urges everyone to take a look at what this will do to provide some reforms for our labor, our workforce in the United States. And certainly that will have an impact here locally as well. So again, grateful to all my colleagues and that's basically it. We do have members here who are, who certainly could speak to the matter if there are any questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Pete Moth Smith?
Well, I, I don't have a question, but I was just wondering if somebody is going to briefly summarize the Protecting the Right to Organize Act?
If, if you don't mind, if I could call on Jerry Sutherland, who is here to perhaps give us some highlights of what, what the intent is.
Mr. Southern is going to speak.
I see him in the meeting. I don't know if he can unmute.
Yes, I can. Actually, I was not really prepared to give a summary of it. A, but it will, well, for one, it would overturn state right to work laws. And it really makes it easier for workers to unionize. It makes it easier for them to win first contracts once they voted for a union. It makes it more difficult for corporations actually to fight against the formation of unions. And really what it does, it, it restores the National Labor Relations Act to what it was initially when it was first passed back in the nineteen thirties and which was intended to make it easier for workers to form unions and to be able to stand up for themselves. And back then, it was actually intended to end a little bit of the labor strife. But nowadays, it would sort of level the field between corporate control and workers' rights. Unless there are any other specific questions that anybody would have, I think that's pretty much, there are some other people that could probably add to that, but I don't know whether you want to go into that. But if you, if you might have specific questions, maybe we can answer those.
That's very helpful, Jerry, thank you. And I do believe that, Mr. Lucas, you can provide a little bit more context from the information that we've provided in our packet this evening.
Yes, thank you. And Mr. Sutherland did a good job of hitting the high points. I'll just point out that the packet for this meeting does include links to the, both the House bill and the Senate bill where folks can find much more information. They can find the full text of each of those bills as well as, I believe, information about how to contact the representatives about, about these pending laws or at least pending in the Senate. So I won't go into more detail than Mr. Sutherland did. I think he did a good job of hitting the high points and happy to answer any questions about specific sections or provisions.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Pete Moth Smith?
Yes, I'm just, as a co-sponsor, I just wanted to add that I think this is very timely for legislation because what it also does is define an employee as opposed to an independent contractor, as someone who does work under the direction of and, and a business entity so that people who drive for Uber or Lyft or for Grubhub or some of these other companies where they have, you know, strict guidelines on how they must conduct their business should be considered employees and therefore have the right to unionize. And since our gig economy is becoming ever larger, I think this is a very important step. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from councilmembers? Seeing none, we'll move to public comment on Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-four, which is to urge the United States Congress to pass the Protecting the Rights to Organize Act. Those intending to speak publicly, please indicate so by using the raised hand function in Zoom and/or sending our meeting post note in chat indicating your desire to speak. And you, I believe, will have about five minutes each, seeing the number on the screen. Who do we have first, Mr. Lucas?
First up is Beth Hamlin.
Good evening, I'm Beth Hamlin, and I'm a Bloomington resident and co-chair of the Bloomington Chapter of the Democratic Socialists of America. Thank you for considering this resolution in support of the PRO Act. Bloomington DSA's Green New Deal Subcommittee believes that the PRO Act is a critical step in creating better conditions for reversing the climate and ecological crises via a just transition away from fossil fuels and towards socially and ecologically just economy for all. Many concerns facing our Bloomington community will require solutions to be enacted at the federal level such as Medicare for All, housing justice, employment for all, free on-demand mental health and substance use disorder treatment. Working class solidarity is how we will achieve these critical advances and the PRO Act is desperately needed in order to focus or to force these changes. We are in the midst of a global environmental crisis and time is running out. We need a Green New Deal yesterday. As Eugene V. Debs said over a century ago, we have been cursed by the grain of, by the rain of gold long enough. I want to thank the Southern Indiana Area Labor Federation for trusting our Bloomington DSA chapter to collaborate on this resolution. It's been a tremendous honor to work with Jerry Sutherland, Jackie Yenna and Zach Perry on this resolution. I appreciate your consideration and your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hamlin. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Drew, who should now be able to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, can you please identify yourself, please?
Yeah, my name is Drew Heiderscheid. I'm a resident of Bloomington, and I'm a PhD graduate worker at IU. And I would like to, and I'm not going to take the full five minutes, so you don't have to worry about that. I would like to speak in support of the resolution by the city council, showing their support for the PRO Act. I'm happy to hear that all of you seem to be in support. But regardless, it's worth saying that the PRO Act would prevent employers from firing workers who engage in striking activity or attempts to form unions. And this would have a deep impact locally as well as nationally, especially in regards to graduate workers at IU, who in the past few years have been subjected to increasing fees, stagnant wages, and constant overwork. And the pro-strike would also legalize solidarity strikes or secondary strikes, which would allow workers to engage in strikes to support workers from other employers and industries, banning offensive lockouts as well. And moreover, the act would outlaw mandatory captive audience meetings, which employers around the country and historically in Indiana have used to organize, have used to subject their employees to anti-union messages. In short, I urge you all to show solidarity with workers around Bloomington and vote in favor of the resolution supporting the passage of the PRO Act in Congress, and I guess I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Thank you for your comments. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Keegan Gulick.
Hello.
Hello.
Yeah, my name is Keegan Gulick. Thank you. I'm here tonight just as a resident and as a member of the Democratic Socialists of America. And I just want to thank you for bringing forward Resolution 21-24, and I ask you that you all vote in favor and support the Protecting the Right to Organize Act. I just think it's really important that our local elected leaders take a stand on the PRO Act, specifically because it just sends a message that our city stands with unions and stands with working-class people. Unions play such an important role in giving workers better wages, better working conditions, and building political power. And the PRO Act is so important because it would undo decades of anti-union labor laws and outlaw many anti-union labor practices, as others have already talked about. For example, repealing right-to-work would be such a huge deal for workers here in Indiana. And, you know, this is also a racial justice issue as well, because unions have played such an important role in the civil rights movement and closing the racial wealth gap. And so the PRO Act really is the first step in just winning even bigger transformative reforms for our country in the future. You know, like other people said, if we're going to win a Green New Deal and adjust transition from fossil fuels, we'll need a stronger labor movement as well. So again, I just want to say thank you for bringing this resolution forward. And I hope that we can use this as a jumping-off point to think about how we can use ARPA funds to support working-class people and essential workers who are struggling as a result of the pandemic. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Gulick. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Aaron Wells.
Hi, can you hear me?
Sure do. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Aaron Wells. I've been in Bloomington for about 10 years now. I would just like to, I'm energized to see that the council has fully co-sponsored this, and I really think that the PRO Act is a good way to help combat the inequality, the increasing inequality that we have in America. I mean, from, from 80s to 2000s, the wages for the bottom-half earners, of income earners, including myself, as I've only grew about 1%, or so, while the top 1% has grown almost double, 200%. So unions are a good way to combat this, and organizing with other workers allows people to really connect with other folks in their community and help and just, just make, make the city and surrounding area more livable. That's it.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Wells. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Jackie Yenna.
Hi, my name, my name is Jackie Yenna. I'm president of the White River Chapter of the Southern Indiana Area Labor Federation. I would like to thank you for bringing this resolution up, and as you support it fully. In doing so, you would not only show Indiana and the communities around our Bloomington and in Indiana, but you show communities in the United States that working men and women are a vital part of this country's structure. And we can do a lot to help build this country up, and we need the help this resolution will give us to be able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yenna. We appreciate your comments. Do we have anyone else, Mr. Lucas?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, seeing none, and we'll return to council for any final comments. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, thank you. I'm happy to co-sponsor and vote in favor of this legislation and this resolution. And I want to thank, again, both the Southern Indiana Area Labor Federation and the Bloomington Chapter of the Democratic Socialists of America for their work on and support of this resolution. A few other notes. First, I brought this up at the July meeting of the Commission on Sustainability, where it was warmly received. That commission has recently started a Just Transition Working Group, which is a concept and movement that was just mentioned by a few of our public speakers, for these focusing on the economic and social equity parts of sustainability as we move towards a livable climate and carbon-neutral future. And of course, strong protection for workers' rights and the ability to organize is a critical part of that movement. So I wanted to highlight that. I believe even one of the members of BCAU was involved in the development of this initially. And then second, I wanted to note that I think resolutions like this are important for a number of reasons. They show where our city government stands on an issue. You know, they help to encourage and add to the collective voices encouraging our representatives in US Congress to pass the legislation. But of course, we're talking about federal legislation here that, if we're being completely honest, Bloomington City Council may not have a lot of influence on whether or not it gets passed or not. Again, important reasons for this resolution, all the same. But that said, when we pass resolutions like this that might not have a direct or immediate sort of hard impact in Bloomington, I try to think about how to augment and increase kind of their impact. And to that end, I and a few colleagues have reached out to local economic leaders as well to get them, or to invite them to weigh in on the PRO Act and the policies it contains and voice their support, if in fact they do support the PRO Act. So I believe councilmembers Piedmont Smith and Sandberg met with members of the Chamber of Commerce earlier this week. And then I've also reached out to Jennifer Pearl with the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation. In both cases, I think the organizations are interested in looking more closely at it and consulting with their boards. This was all sort of happening a little bit too quickly to have them officially weigh in via a public letter, say, because it takes some time for the boards to meet and consider these issues. But I just wanted to note that we are following up with local economic leaders as well to try to, again, augment the impact of our support for workers' rights here in Bloomington, and we'll continue to do that, and I hope to report back on that in a few weeks or a month's time. So thank you again, and I'll be voting in favor of this.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty. Councilmember Rala?
Thank you. Just to voice my support, the right to organize and collective bargaining has been integral in our country for nearly 100 years as a counterweight to corporate power. And right-to-work laws was initially a means to undercut workers' rights and ability to organize, and that predated globalization, which made matters even worse. And of course, as been mentioned by a member of the public, the decline in worker power through unions has resulted in this really perverse massive wage and wealth disparity in the country. That's very destabilizing for our country. And of course, we feel it locally. We feel it in Indiana and in Bloomington. So it's in our interest to support this, and I support everyone who worked to bring it to us, and I'll be, of course, supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rala. I'm ready for the comment from councilmembers. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I'd also like to thank the labor organizations and the DSA for working on this, and Councilmember Sandberg for bringing it to all of our attention. And please reach out to Senator Mike Braun and Senator Todd Young and urge them to at least give this legislation a hearing in the Senate. As we know these days, it's, it's difficult to even get a hearing in the Senate the way that it is split along partisan lines. But really, the wealth, wealth gap and wealth inequality, as Councilmember Rala said, is destabilizing and should be a concern to all of us. And this PRO Act will help that very grave issue by creating a bit more equity between labor and capital. So please contact your senators and urge them to support the PRO Act. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further comments from councilmembers? Okay, seeing none, I'll end this. Councilmember Rosenberger?
Oh, thanks. I was just gonna not say anything if you didn't see me. I just wanted to briefly say I'm happy to co-sponsor this resolution, and thank you also to DSA and Southern Indiana Regional Labor Council for bringing this up. I worked for the AFL-CIO for many years and like really believe in the right to organize and bargain collectively. And just that I think workers are a group of folks that, you know, have so many shared values. And when they get to bargain and really work for them, work for their benefits and pay, I think the world is in a better place. I mean, sadly, during that time, though, a lot of states changed to right-to-work states, so taking away a lot of union power and then just numbers of union members in general, of course, because workers, you know, are no longer required to be in unions. So I would love to see our federal government pass this, and I echo what Councilmember Piedmont Smith says, that just call your federal representatives and try to get this up in the Senate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, seeing any further, I'll end this with saying I am very happy to be a co-sponsor to this resolution as well. Many of us remember a time when unions and union activity was more prevalent. And I hope that you can remember that that also would coincide with a much stronger middle class in our country. And it's kind of gone along that as you lose that activity and lose that power and that authority, and so have we start to lose our middle class and bridge in the gap between the haves and have-nots, if you will. I also want to thank Mr. Sutherland, Mr. Yenna, sponsor, Councilmember Sandberg, and particularly Mr. Sutherland and Yenna for discussing this with us. I do believe it was in our last work session, and that helped clarify some of the questions that I had. Just for clarification, not lack of support, or I just wanted to be clear on what this legislation would do. And I'm also very thankful for those who had public comments this evening. So having said that, are we ready for the question? Okay, seeing no further comments from council, will the clerk please call the roll on Resolution 21-24?
Yes, Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rala?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Rosenberger?
Yes.
And Scambolary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Thank you all. That resolution passes nine zero. I do believe, I don't know if I can say that real fast, I do believe we have more legislation ready, ready for second reading tonight. Councilmember Flaherty?
President Sims, I move that Resolution 21-25 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Okay.
Thank you. Been properly moved in second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rala?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Rosenberger?
Yes.
Scambolary?
Yes.
And Sims?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That motion passes. Will the clerk please read?
Yes, Resolution 2125 to adopt a community investment plan detailing the use of funding provided under the American Rescue Plan Act to support the city of Bloomington's recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic. The synopsis is as follows: This resolution adopts a community investment plan to provide details for the use of funds received by the city of Bloomington under the American Rescue Plan Act. Please note, this resolution was revised after distribution in the legislative packet, but before introduction at the July 21st, 2021 regular session to correctly state the approximate amount of funds, $22.1 million, the city expects to receive under the American Rescue Plan Act.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty?
I move that Resolution 21-25 be adopted.
Okay.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second. I'm trying to see who's presenting this evening. Mayor Hamilton, there you are. I didn't see you. That's okay. Thank you for joining us. Can you please present or please start?
Thank you very much. First, it's really, can you hear me all right? It's nice, nice to see you all again, and welcome back and looking forward. There are so many good things already talked about tonight and issues and all, but I won't go into those because I want to try to to spend some time focused with you and get you to hear some important voices. Of course, we're here to talk about the American Rescue Plan, which, as you all know, was passed by the new Congress and signed by our new President Biden in March, assigning, appropriating $22.3 million to Bloomington. In April, the next month, late in April, we had a shared information with you as council, a meeting with you as well. And since that time, have been continuing to get feedback about ideas, suggestions, how to approach this extraordinary opportunity from you directly, councilmembers. A resident survey that got about 150 responses, input from civic organizations directly, other governmental units locally, and of course, city staff, and that has been a very robust conversation and over the last three months. It's called a rescue plan to help us recover from this pandemic, especially disproportionately affected individuals and communities. As, as we have talked about, we emphasize the lenses, two lenses to review proposals, which we've heard many of. One is sustainability, particularly climate, but its other components as well as one lens to review ideas. A second is inclusion and equity, and trying to assure that we move forward in both of those areas with this potentially transformational opportunity that is in front of us. A transformational opportunity, serious, one-time money in significant amounts. We, we look as well, as you know, for collaborations, for leverage. We try to pay attention to other funding options that may be available for some of these ideas. And we anticipate and think about future regulation changes as we're trying to assess the best approach to this. So the timing of the investments, we're basically looking at 2021, 2022, and 2023 as kind of the benchmark start, which leads us to tonight, the first round of ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act, to be followed soon next month by ARPA for 2022 in the budget hearings. And you'll actually hear a CARES Act request next week for about $600,000 as well. In a way, this is recover forward, phase three, from 2020 to 2021, and now moving into the end of this year in 2023. Based on all of this input and evaluation of investments that can be transformative and timely, yet this year- yet this year with impacts, uh, promoting sustainability and equity. You're going to hear tonight about a proposal, and you know, of of a little less than three point five million dollars to be requested tonight through a plan that we ask you to adopt and an appropriation ordinance which will accompany that, uh, that that's all encompassed in the plan of investments. I encourage you uh, to embrace it and help move us forward. Uh, and you'll hear very briefly from individuals who will outline each of the requests. I think there are nine spec- specific requests, not that many separate individuals. We're happy to take questions now or later to any or all of us. I just want to thank you and the public and our organizations for all this input. Uh, leadership of your of the council tonight will be critical as well. Um, I know there will be pieces of this that somebody doesn't like. Uh, it's a, it's a, it's a combination of attempts to do transformational things for our community in the four buckets. We've talked about revenue replacement, which actually we're pushing to next time, uh, which you can hear about. Housing insecurity, which is a little more than one point five million, the largest area. Economic recovery and jobs, including the arts, which is a little less than one million in this request, and public infrastructure, uh, approximately eight hundred thousand dollars here. So uh, I I wish I could talk forty minutes about all this stuff. We're excited, uh, but I'm gonna let you hear from other people. And thank you very much for your consideration and support, I hope, for this, uh, very important step forward for our community. And I think, Mr. Chair, it may be, um, Corporation Council, Guthrie and Controller Underwood are here to help, um, broker through this, and then we asked you to hear some other individuals about specific requests.
Okay, thank you. Before we get started, you have any idea about how many? You mentioned nine?
It's it's not nine. I believe, uh, Philippa, you may have the exact number. I think it's four or five. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. We're asking two minutes each.
Two minutes or less.
So are we negotiating? Can we start?
No, no, we have, we have already given them the message.
Yes, we're just some little humor. We're fine. So please begin with your presentation. Thank you.
Okay, so I I'm kind of the ringleader. I will introduce people as they are going to, um, speak since you don't know who they are ahead of time. Just a few legal points, uh, to build on what, uh, the mayor said. The resolution tonight is for twenty twenty one expenditures. Uh, and there, the projects are laid out, uh, in these four categories. Actually, it's only two of them, and I'll explain that in a minute. That are eligible uses for ARPA funds and that were identified as needs of the community for recovery. So there are two categories that have no requests this particular time. And one of them is, uh, revenue replacement. Uh, and we will be asking for some of that, I believe, in our twenty twenty two budget, but part of the reason we're waiting on that is because there is a little bit of a conflict between, uh, what the State Board of Accounts seems to be requiring and what the federal government seems to allow. So we are waiting for more guidance on that. We believe that will be forthcoming. Uh, the other is, um, addressing the disproportionate impacts on communities of color and low-income families. We fully intend to utilize this category. But it also has, it has a presumption of, um, youth being in a qualified census tract. And we understand there may be more guidance on that as well, and we would rather wait and see if that will be broadened. So, um, and we also may take some of the housing, um, bucket that we have for you to consider tonight and move that depending on on where the use will end up being. One final note, the resolution and the ordinance, you will notice when you read them and also when we address the ordinance next week, that they are structured so that amending the plan that we are proposing tonight will happen after, um, an ordinance for appropriations is submitted to you and you approve it so that what we end up with is a plan that reflects all of the app awards that have been approved, and we don't have confusion over that. So that that ends my legal, um, speech, and the first presenter is John Zodi.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. It's Mr. Zodi, President.
And.
Hi, Mrs. Zodi.
Hi, everyone. Welcome back from your recess. I appreciate the time tonight and just wanna, um, uh, talk a little about the landlord mitigation fund, um, which, uh, is being proposed for a two hundred thousand dollars. Um, is the, is, is what's in the request to, request to establish a landlord mitigation uh, fund, and this is really designed to help those who have barriers to affordable housing and housing security. Um, who may have, uh, something on their record like poor credit or a past eviction to help minimize the uh, perceived risk, uh, or the risk, uh, the realized risk by a landlord or another property owner and and, uh, helping those who have housing choice vouchers or other, um, um, affordable housing tools to mitigate that real or perceived risk with, uh, taking that person or that family on as a tenant. So, uh, we would like to establish a, uh, uh, funding pool that that can include, that would include a staff person as well as, um, kind of establish seed money to get this started, uh, to operate the program that would include tenant education as well, um, and include landlord-tenant liaison work, which there are people in the community doing great work on that already, but uh, the city and the Bloomington Housing Authority would partner on this. Amber Scobie, uh, the executive director of the BHA is on. And really, the 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 data that speaks to this most prominently i- is the success rate of those who have housing choice vouchers, and that that data over the last couple of years, uh, lies in the sixty percent range and in a little above and a little below. And so when you look at that, we want to do everything we can to keep people in homes, uh, to make sure people have all the options out there on affordable homes. Uh, and so that is the goal of the landlord, uh, mitigation risk. We have to tackle this problem, as all of you well know, from, uh, uh, different perspectives and different directions and do everything we can to wrap our hands around the problem and make sure that we're helping everyone in the way they need help, uh, to get them, uh, to be housing secure. So um, we appreciate your time and consideration of all this, and, uh, I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Uh, John, is Amber presenting on the grant to the BHA?
On the Summit Hill.
Yes.
Everyone. Um, yes, I believe she is. Uh, Amber. You're on.
Is she here?
No, she's here.
Oh, there she is. I see her name. Uh, we can come back to Amber.
Well, she, she raised.
She should now be, she should now be a co-host. I'm sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. Zodi. Go ahead, Ms. Scobie. I think you're muted. I think you're muted.
I don't believe she's muted. It sounds like her audio is not connected.
Okay, um.
I'm happy to talk a little bit about this, Amber. I don't wanna, uh, steal your thunder here, but I'm happy to tell what I know about this. If you're unable to connect on audio, uh, just to make sure we get the presentation made here, let me know. Give me a thumbs up if you're not able to connect.
If it's okay with you, can we just give her a few minutes? And who do you have next, Ms. Guthrie?
Next, we have Ephraim Pfefferman from the United Way. She will be talking about the grant to the United Way.
Thank you, and we'll try to come back to get Ms. Scobie. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Council. Um, and thank you so much for the opportunity, uh, to share a brief overview of the request before you tonight. Um, and as a side note, I I wanted to also thank you for your supportive labor this evening. Um, United Way has a longstanding partnership with the AFL CIO and representation on our board of directors, and actually Jerry Sutherland, uh, fills that that role. Um, we appreciate the the partnership and appreciate your support for for that this evening. So, um, hi, I'm Ephraim Pfefferman. I'm the executive director of United Way of Monroe County. And I'm here tonight on behalf of the Community Foundation of Bloomington, Monroe County, and United Way of Monroe County, seeking your support for implementation funds for the Heading Home twenty twenty one plan. Tina Peterson of the Community Foundation sends her regrets having a prior commitment this evening. So in January of this year, with the support of the city and other partners, United Way and the Community Foundation, um, partnered together to convene local stakeholders in order to update our community's two thousand and fourteen Heading Home Plan. A group of sixty individuals representing over forty different organizations, including service providers, funders, local government entities, business representatives, and people experiencing homelessness and housing insecurity, began meeting in order to assess progress made on the twenty fourteen plan and to update this plan for the future. The updated plan, which was released last week, serves as our community's guide to supporting long-term initiatives which will decrease housing insecurity and homelessness in our community and region. Tina, I would like to share our deepest appreciation for everyone who volunteered their time and expertise serving on committees and the working group. City administration, including Mayor Hamilton, Beverly Callender Anderson and others, and city council members, including councilmembers Piedmont Smith, Scambalory, Sandberg, and Smith, were critical to this work, as was the financial support for project management over the past few months. Some committees, uh, presented recommendations to the working group in the areas of data and dashboarding, promising practices and resource mapping. And the plan incorporated these recommendations. Highlights of the recommendations include developing a data dashboard for our community in order to track our progress on this plan, increasing case management and supportive services, adopting a housing-first approach and aligning all services around it, expanding landlord relations and incentives throughout our region, broadening the working group into a coalition, and dedicating an entity with full-time staffing to the implementation of this long-term work. This last recommendation of a dedicated entity is one that the group felt was critical for success, and in fact, uh, the lack of such an entity or individuals dedicated to the plan's implementation is a key factor we felt hindered progress on the twenty thousand fourteen plan. No one person or one entity was tasked with carrying it out. No resources were invested in its implementation. Service providers, already burdened by the difficult work of serving individuals in crisis, cannot be asked to take on this additional full-time regional work. So we're here today to request that support for an entity which will be housed within United Way but operate independently and be tasked with the implementation of the Heading Home twenty twenty one plan to make homelessness rare, brief, and non-repeating. The funding will not only support two full-time staff for the initial launch and the first couple of years, but also targeted consulting services for programmatic pieces such as the data dashboard I mentioned, landlord incentives throughout the region, similar to the work that the Bloomington Housing Authority is is looking at in alignment with this, case management, training, and more. United Way and the Community Foundation are working on long-term financial sustainability of the project, acknowledging that ARPA funds must be utilized within a specific timeframe. Uh, but to maintain the good momentum momentum of twenty twenty one and the work that has taken place and to launch the next phase with adequate resources, this funding will be critical. So your support for this one point two million dollar request, um, is as much appreciated as is your support for all of the work that has gone on thus far. Um, I thank you all for your time, for your leadership. Mayor Hamilton and his administration for leadership on this issue, and I'm here to, um, answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pfefferman. Um, Ms. Guthrie is, Ms. Scobie connected yet?
Amber.
Um, I am using my iPhone, so hopefully this audio is better.
Yes, much.
Okay, great. Sorry about that. I think I would have this down by now.
You're fine. Thank you.
So I'm Amber Scobie, the executive director of the Bloomington Housing Authority. So thank you for the consideration of this ARPA funding to support the work we're doing at the Housing Authority and also our nonprofit development arm, Summit Hill Community Development Corporation. So as you know, the mission of the Housing Authority is to provide housing opportunities, um, most of which we've done for several decades through HUD-funded programs uh, like public housing, housing choice vouchers, um, and most recently, some of the renovation work that we're doing with the Rental Assistance Demonstration Program. Um, but we know that the need for affordable housing, whether it's rental or homeownership, extends well beyond those core BHA programs. Hence, um, the launching of Summit Hill in in twenty seventeen to develop, own, manage, and and preserve high-quality housing. Uh, so the request, the two hundred fifty thousand, um, dollars in the administration's memo, uh, for ARPA funding will primarily go towards building the capacity of the Housing Authority and Summit Hill in two ways. Um, first, we'd like to hire experts that can provide some technical assistance in positioning Summit Hill to establish a community land trust and the tools, um, that we could use to promote affordability like ground leases and deed restrictions. Uh, we need help on how to structure that land trust. We want it um, do a good approach the first time. Um, what roles will this community land trust play? Um, specifically, um, how Summit Hill can partner with very or various organizations and also some oper- operational choices to be made. Um, second, the funding would help, uh, fund a staff that is dedicated to affordable housing development. Right now, at the Housing Authority, we rely on a few key positions that, um, do help do that development work, but it's just a portion of the staff time. And it it just, it can't keep up with the long-term intensity of adding more units and, uh, being able to do something sophisticated like a community land trust. Um, we'd really like to help build that internal capacity. Um, also, it could help, uh, fund some other development partners. Uh, right now, we use a lot of co-developers to help us with the technical pieces of, you know, financing deals, um, bringing them all the way through, uh, the construction phase, and that funding can also help. So please know that this investment just builds on the past successes of our organization. There's lots of good momentum happening, um, at BHA. Um, so just please allow us to be a better partner to the city efforts in creating high-quality affordable housing in both the rental and the homeownership categories. Um, so that's my brief presentation, and, um, as you know, many more people are here to speak, and I'll be hanging on um, this Zoom to answer any questions later. So thank you again. Good to see everyone.
Thank you for your presentation, Ms. Scobie. Um, who do we have next, Ms. Guthrie, on your list?
I want to emphasize, it's not too many more. Alex Crowley is next. He'll be talking about, uh, four different projects, uh, and he may also have someone from the community with him.
Good evening, council members. Can you hear me okay?
We hear you fine, Mr. Crowley. How are you?
Very well, thanks. How are you, presence?
Good.
I'm Alex Crowley, Director of Economic and Sustainable Development. I will speak briefly regarding four, uh, of the next, uh, line items in the proposal and ask Kate Galvin to add a brief perspective from the arts community at the end. Staff has requested a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in ARPA funding to accelerate inclusive job training and employment growth through collaborative, uh, collaborative programs like Reboot and direct city employment for underemployed categories of workers. Some of these programs were successfully implemented as part of Recover Forward, including Public Works' partnership with Centerstone and Made Up Mine, an organization dedicated to supporting formerly incarcerated individuals in developing job skills and finding employment. Greg May, Director of Integrated Health at Centerstone Bloomington, sent along the following quotation from a, a program participant. Quote, "The program has given me people who care about me and give me hope. They showed me that there was hope when I didn't have any," end quote. New programming includes funding support for Reboot, a program out of the mill that views entrepreneurship as a way up and out of, uh, the carceral system. Patty East of the Mill sent along the following information. Uh, Danielle Morris, owner of Heron Studios Photography and participant in the first reboot reboot cohort, won the reboot demo night and immediately invested her winnings in her website and an equipment upgrade. For every session she books, Danielle donates a photography session to a woman in recovery. We're, uh, regarding the next three items, following the Waldron's, uh, the Waldron Task Force's announcement of its recommendations on May twenty Mayor Hamilton made a significant commitment to supporting the arts as an economic driver in Bloomington by leveraging existing resources like the Waldron and the Busker Chumley Theater, and also by undertaking a feasibility study for a purpose-built facility. and also by undertaking a feasibility study for a purpose-built facility. The $175,000 for grants will be economic recovery grants for impacted arts groups, artists, and related organizations in our community. These can include both equipment needs or operating grants for groups and individual artists. The $550,000 in deferred maintenance for the Waldron results from the task forces and the city's professionally assessed due diligence of needs to facilitate a January 3, 2022, opening of this important arts facility. And finally, the $50,000 fund, $50,000 funds a feasibility study of the community's arts needs and capacity to answer the question, could a purpose-built arts facility materially improve Bloomington's position as a regional center of arts culture by better serving and cultivating our artists? And would that facility, if built, be viable and successful? So now I'll ask Kate Galvin, who's the artistic director of Cardinal Stage Company, to speak directly to the impact of the arts funding. Kate?
Thank you, Alex. Can everyone hear me? Yes, great. I am so happy to be here tonight, and I was thrilled to see earlier that the performing arts and arts and culture continue to perform highly on surveys about our community. That is not surprising news, but always good to hear. Cardinal is one of several local arts organizations who have called the Waldron Art Center and the Buzzkirk-Chumley Theater home for many years, and I want to urge the council to approve the use of ARPA funds for deferred maintenance on the Waldron, these recovery grants to local arts organizations, and investment in the feasibility study for the new performing arts, potential new performing arts facility. As I'm sure you are all aware, performing arts sector has been hit really hard by COVID, and the closure of the Waldron last spring has only added to the uncertainty that Cardinal and other organizations have been dealing with as we try to plan for reopening and rebuilding our businesses. Putting a production up requires a long on-ramp. We need to secure licenses for our shows a year in advance. We need to contract artists six to 12 months in advance in order to get them to commit to our productions. We need to have many pieces in place before we can ever announce a season or sell a single ticket. And with so much uncertainty over the past year, we've really been struggling to plan for the future. We are so grateful that the mayor has committed to reopening the Waldron in January, and this ARPA funding is crucial to support all the maintenance required to meet that deadline. Strategic upgrades to aging equipment at the Waldron and the BCT will result in lower energy use, better accessibility and value for renters, and better productions for audiences. There are still a lot of elements out of our control, as I'm sure we're all aware, including the ever-changing state of the pandemic and supply chain delays. But today, you do have control over something. You can actually move the needle on bringing the live arts back to Bloomington after this incredibly challenging year by approving this funding. So thank you for your time and consideration, and I will hand it back to Alex.
Thanks, Kate. I'll just wrap up by saying thank you for your consideration this evening of these requests, and I will be around to answer questions at the end.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Vic Kelson.
Hello, can you hear me?
You're fine, Mr. Kelson. How are you?
At work the first time. I'm Vic Kelson. I'm the Director of Utilities for the City of Bloomington. Our department is requesting $700,000 to support our implementation of the EPA's updated lead and copper rule. Lead pipe was banned in 1986, but there's a lot of lead pipe out there. EPA's ultimate objective is to eliminate all lead pipe from the nation's water supply infrastructure. This will obviously take decades, but the first step in the process is for utilities like CBU to create an accurate inventory of all lead water mains and all service lines by the end of 2024. While CBU has no lead water mains, we must, we have to create an inventory of all the service lines that are made of lead or are made of galvanized pipe that lies downstream of a lead pipe. Each of our 27,000 connections has two sections. The city owns the portion that extends from the water main to the meter, and the customer owns the portion that goes from the meter to the home. These pipes are often composed of different materials, so we actually have to check two pipes per customer. CBU didn't keep records of what the service lines were made of over the years, so we're largely starting from scratch. We can begin the process using analysis of what data we have, such as the date that buildings were built. And since also we have institutional knowledge of our service line replacements during the water main repairs that we've done or water main replacements that we've done or other installations. However, to complete our inventory, we have to dig to identify the pipe materials. Our $700,000 request will allow us to utilize a vacuum truck to make potholes for accessing the service lines. To make the process more efficient, we plan to utilize the services of the company called Blue Conduit. They use machine learning and predictive modeling along with existing data in our field results to create a plan for prioritizing areas for field excavations. Blue Conduit used their algorithm to help Flint, Michigan, remove lead from their city pipes, and they're working with cities all over the country. Our request will produce, will provide the resources to build our inventory rapidly and cost-effectively. There's a chance that there may be federal or state dollars for replacement projects coming in the next few years. So having our inventory in place will help us access outside funding if it comes to be. Your support will help us to protect city residents from lead exposure and accelerate through the elimination of lead service lines from the City of Bloomington. Thanks for your consideration, and I'll be here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kelson.
We have one final speaker, and it is Rick Deeds.
Good evening, President Sims and council. I'm Rick Deeds, Director of the Information and Technology Services Department of the City of Bloomington. Excited to talk with you today about this ARPA request to fund Wi-Fi expansion in city parks. Through Recover Forward, we've already established a grants fund, and we awarded our first annual digital equity grants in 2020. And our 2021 digital equity grants application round will open in August. This particular request represents another opportunity to build upon our 2020 Digital Equity Strategic Plan and address another of its recommendations. That plan calls for the city to review expanding Wi-Fi facilities like city parks. In our first round of this effort, we're targeting Butler Park, Crestmont Park, People's Park, and Waldron Hill and Buzzkirk Park, formerly Third Street Park. We know there's some challenges at these parks with power, facilities, and connectivity, but as part of this project, we will do everything we can to expand public Wi-Fi access in these strategic locations. We appreciate your consideration for this proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Deeds. Ms. Guthrie, are you still here? Is that it?
That is it. We're just all here available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you all for the presentations. We'll now go to council for questions. We'll start with Councilmember Rallo, and then I see Councilmember Piedmont Smith next after that.
Thank you, President Sims. Well, I'll begin with Director Kelson. Just clarification. The $700,000 is meant for exploratory and evaluation of the systems, the piping system, but not replacement. Is that correct?
That's correct. What we'll do is, once we have the inventory, as you know, we've been doing water main replacements over the last several years. This will become another component of our water main replacement planning. So we can prioritize areas that have lead and copper, or lead, sorry, lead or galvanized service lines in our replacements, because whenever you do a water main replacement, you have to replace the service lines as well. Now, there's still an issue of how the water, the customer portion of the service line will be paid for. But that's all part of some discussions that are happening, both federally and at the state. So by the time we get through our inventory, we'll have stronger answers about that and how we would go forward once we start doing replacements.
I see. Just to be clear, this will be exhaustive throughout the city, so you will, is that correct?
Yes, through our entire distribution system, which does include customers outside the city. We're responsible for all of our customers.
I see. And then it will include the public piping and then the private line as well. Is that correct? And will we inform the residents of the fact that they've got lead piping? I mean, in case they want to replace it in the meantime?
I'm not sure how the process will go. It's public information, of course. I think there's a balancing act there about when when you bring that up, because what happens is, anybody, if we find someone who's got a lead pipe, they can, we will test water for that. The way we deliver the water, the water is at a pH that tends to make a scale form inside a pipe. So we do take action already to protect customers from lead that might leach from their pipes. But any customer who wants a lead water, a test for lead in their drinking water, we'll do that right now for free. So clearly, some customers will want to know that in areas where we do find lead. But at this point, we haven't gotten that far in the design of our local inventory program.
I see. And so just, that was part of my follow-up, is that there is, there are repercussions being made by CBU to prevent lead ions in people's water. So if they're informed, they shouldn't be alarmed, because the likelihood is that the scale prevents any kind of contamination.
Right. So they may still want to have it tested, and we do regularly do lead testing for free.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, I have a very broad question just about the plan versus the appropriation ordinance, which is up for first reading tonight. So the plan, it seems to me the plan has broad categories, and then the specific expenditure requests of appropriation ordinance 2101 are also listed in the plan. And I'm just wondering why that is. Why can't the plan be general enough so that we don't have to keep updating it?
I'll try and answer that. I think, well, to be honest, it is difficult for everybody trying to comply with the SBOA requirement, because there are no other instructions about how to do this. So we came up with this. We have outside counsel helping us in Indianapolis, and this was his best advice on how to approach this. I guess our main concern was that eventually we are documenting all of the expenditures that you are approving and that we are moving forward with, because we will be responsible to account for how we spend the money to the SBOA. So that was our proposed way of doing it, and there is no real guideline for how to do it.
So if I understand correctly, we will adjust the plan with subsequent appropriations of these funds. Is that correct?
Yes, we will work as we did this time with here our thoughts on next expenditures, and of course, we will solicit your input and other input. And then we will generate an appropriations ordinance and go through that process with you, and then we will then update the plan according to what you've approved.
So, Mr. Sims, if I may, just one final follow-up.
Yes, you may. Thank you.
So then I expect the next appropriation after 2101 will be part of the 2022 budget. So at that point, would we also need to have a resolution to update the plan?
I don't think you'll need to have a resolution to update it, because every time we do it, because it's, there's language in both documents that says it will be amended as appropriations are approved.
Okay.
It'll just be done. It'll be a ministerial act on the part of the staff to just update it.
But we will see that.
Yes, yes.
In my, hand-in-hand with the next appropriation.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions from council members? Councilmember Smith, and then Councilmember Scambaluri.
Thank you, President Sims. I don't know who this is really directed to, but I sent some comments back, and one of the things that was confusing to me or I didn't understand was that the appropriations were about 3.3 million. And if I understand it correctly, we got 11.1 million. And so there's an estimated replacement revenue of about 6.4 million. I guess I don't understand why our program allocations are only 3.3 million, and then the replacement is 6.4. Do I misunderstand that? Perhaps with the comment to Councilmember Piedmont Smith's question, are there additional appropriations that will be asked that will count towards the 11.1 million total? So that instead of 3.3 million in expenditures for programs, it will end up being more than that in comparison to that 11.1 million?
Can I take a shot at that? And Control or Underwood, if you want to amend, correct, clarify, whatever. But thank you for the question. The 11 million which arrived is purely mathematical that the federal government's in as half of it. But nothing gets spent without your appropriation ordinance, and nothing can get spent without consistent consistency with the plan and the choice not to ask for the estimated 6.4 replacement revenue simply reflects the fact that we have a little more time to figure out how to do that. Once that money is appropriated, and it's working with the Board of Accounts and others, that actually is the most flexible money that we will have. So we want to take a little time to make sure together we understand how to do it, when to do it, know the rules that we can use it. So that 6.4 is just sitting there waiting, if you will, whatever that number ends up being. The 3.35, or is that the exact number? Is the money that we felt, based on tons of input, of course, could meet the criteria of advancing the causes that we all agree on, but also be investable this year, this calendar year. And I expect, you know, we tried to find the things that could be done quickly, and we're confident we'll be advancing the goals that we all share. You will see a lot more issues in the 2022 budget that will lead to another appropriation ordinance for another amount that will give us all more time to discuss, a few months more time. And then you may see more appropriation ordinance down the road. So we don't exactly know the rhythm of all this, but we're just asking that this first chunk, we believe, can be very well invested in the next few months of 2021, if that helps. And I don't know if Control or Underwood would like to clarify anything.
Sure. My follow-up question was just going to be, so does that mean then we may look at additional appropriations that would go towards affordable housing in the city?
Sure. I expect, I mean, we've heard a lot of different comments tonight from different angles. I fully, well, the largest category tonight is affordable housing. It would not at all surprise me that that is consistent in the packages of requests, though we want to let that work out and get your feedback on that. But that's been a core area, and we expect it to continue to be.
Thank you, Mayor Hamilton. I appreciate that. That helps.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. And before I go to Councilmember Scambaluri, with all due respect to her, Mayor Hamilton, if you don't mind reappearing?
Sure.
There you go. I know you like being with us. If you could, and I don't have a question as much as a little bit of clarification or transparency on the importance of this body approving or considering the plan before the app war, and it has to be done in that regard and with the consistency in relation to the two. before the app ward, and it has to be done in that regard and with the consistency in in relation to the two, just so that we're clear.
Thank you. I'll I'll try. As as Council Guthrie indicated, you know, we are, there's a lot of moving parts in this. But the basic point is any expenditures have to be done in accordance with a plan. And and that plan, we have outlined to you and have frankly designed it to be quite generic in its goals and descriptions. And then it will be very specific in its programmatic appropriation, so specific that it's just that is identical with the appropriation ordinance that will put this money to use to work. So that plan has to be exactly consistent with the appropriation ordinance. And so it it's helpful if that plan is adopted soon. As as Mr. Guthrie said, you know, our we will, we will, we will always make it updated to be exactly consistent with the appropriation ordinances that have appropriately passed this council. And each each time we do it, we'll update the plan to incorporate whatever is in any appropriation ordinance that you do from ARPA. And that's the best I can do. I don't know if I if anybody else wants to try better.
I think that's pretty clear. As we've talked before, and I understand, I just want to make sure all my colleagues kind of here then have a understanding. Thank you. Councilmember Campbell.
Yes, thank you. So just to summarize and confirm, it sounds like we will get an updated plan for every app ward, not an updated plan for every tranche. Is that correct?
I think that's, I'm not sure what which tranche, but the the every time you pass an appropriation ordinance of ARPA money, the plan will be updated in accordance with that.
Got it. And it it seems to me that makes sense because we might learn something in the next six months as we make some expenditures. So we could adjust. I mean, am I thinking correctly on that or?
Yes, this is a two year process at least.
Okay, great. And then I have some specific questions for Mr. Kelson and Mr. Crowley, if y'all want to pop back in. Mr. Kelson, the the I'm glad to see this project that you've proposed. So so thank you for doing that. I just had a question. This report will be offered as a loan credit program to the CBU with potential future reimbursement. Could you say a little more about that?
Well, the the idea is that we don't know if there's going to be federal funding or state level funding for the replacement program and whether those dollars could be also used to pay for for the inventory. And if that's possible, then we would reimburse it.
Okay.
I mean, we, you know, if we got the grants and so forth. The idea is we're trying to get a head start before the before any federal funding for doing these replacements actually arrives.
Okay. That's what I needed. Thank you. And then, Mr. Crowley, there you are. What's listed here is Bloomington Remote Reboot and Brighton B-Town. Are is there a potential for other new programs, do you think, or eventually? Or what? I guess I'm curious as to what led led us to choose and focus on these three.
Those are example, it's a good question. Those are those are some of the examples. There are a couple of others. We have some detail underlying the 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 total amounts. And yes, there there is at least one new program in there. We are trying to, where we can, and especially given what Mayor Hamilton said about speed to market in terms of the expenditures, leverage successful programs that we know about and really, you know, try to double down on those. So so that is that mostly what we're doing. But 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 there there will be some cases where we try something new, and then we'll learn from it. And then if it's successful, we'd come back to you for a continuation of a program as part of the, you know, future funding.
Or scale it up or something, probably.
Or scale it up, yeah.
Yeah, okay, great. And then I have one more quick one for Mr. Zodi, but I could hold that if you prefer, Mr. President, until everyone else gets a shot.
I don't see any other hands presently, so please. Okay, Councilmember Flaherty.
Sure, thank you. I was just waiting. I had a question related to the Landlord Risk Mitigation Fund. Was my understanding correct that at present, the the plan for that fund is to only apply to Section 8 Housing Choice voucher holders?
It would be, that was where we would start, and Amber is on here, and I think it could it could broaden out for from there. But the most immediate need is to help those who have those resources and who would have to potentially give that money back to help get them housing ASAP. So I'll defer to Amber for any additional comment there. Thanks for the question.
Thank you.
Yeah, the fund is definitely needed for those that have a voucher, especially those who might have a past eviction on their record, criminal history, et cetera. I also think there is a need with Beacon and their rapid rehousing program in some ways that acts like a short term voucher. They work with landlords on the private market for that rapid rehousing program. Also, we should consider as a community those who are coming from the coordinated entry list. And those folks also might need access to this type of fund. So I think it's good to build sort of see how things go using some of the voucher families. But also, we have other partners in the community, including Beacon, I think would benefit from this fund.
But just to clarify, this fund wouldn't apply to some of those other categories or or needs you just identified now, but it's a bit more perspective. Let's start with this and maybe consider other needs in the community. Is that accurate? Or would other entities be eligible to access the fund in some way or benefit from it?
We haven't developed that out yet, Councilmember Flaherty. But I do think what we're talking about now is starting with those who hold vouchers because we know that if they aren't housed in a certain period of time or that there is the identifying that risk and understanding that for folks that we know have the ability to obtain housing through a voucher. We need to start there and then see where it goes, depending on the amount of money that that it takes, depending on the staff capacity that it takes as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll go back to Councilmember Campbell.
Yes, thank you. And also on the Landlord Risk Mitigation Fund, and thank you for your patience with my questions here. I I may have misheard you, but I thought I understood that this, the 200,000 listed here would go towards staffing. Are there other elements to that? To the how the 200,000 would be used or just could you speak to that and a bit more?
Sure, the I think it's twofold, Councilmember Scambler, because the if we start at the with the voucher holders, the ability to, you know, sort of that the the staffing capacity issue is is both the case management, the navigation of of the housing market for those voucher holders. And then having the actual funds to mitigate the risk, it would be twofold. And so there would be money in there to help the risk, you know, risk mitigation funds for for landlords or property managers. And then there would actually be the the staffing capacity. So if I'm understanding your question correctly, it would be a dual purpose where we would start with those voucher holders and then hopefully expand beyond that because it would be both a a city and a and a BHA funded partnership here. So that's that's where we were, we we were thinking with that and see how long that could that could go from this one time expenditure. So Amber, if you have anything there, defer to you.
I'll just add that the Housing Authority has about $75,000 to contribute to a risk mitigation fund. And so we feel like with that contribution and then this additional funding, that's a great resource for our voucher holders. And again, happy to partner with other agencies that do similar work, like Beacon, helping some of those clients with rapid rehousing.
Okay, um, thank you. And I'm sorry to be slow about this, but so I get the staffing part because that is labor intensive to manage all those those cases. For the Landlord Risk Mitigation Fund, what exactly happens to those dollars? Do they support rent payments? Do they do they provide down payments or do they provide deposit, security deposits? Or how do they mitigate risk, I guess? I'm sorry if I'm being slow here, but.
Amber, I think your best answer to that one, if you're you're able to.
Okay, it's a pool of money available to tenants that in case there is a nonpayment of rent issue or perhaps damages, the funding would be available to pay back the property owner, their landlord for any unpaid rent up to a certain amount and also any damages up to a certain amount. Some research that we've done from funds throughout the country, you know, it might be 2,000 to 2,500 a MAC payout to property owners, you know, to make up for any damage or unpaid rent that a tenant might have. But what we found is that there's actually pretty low payout thanks to some of the tenant education pieces and the ongoing case manager management. Hopefully, we also see that, you know, this fund's available, but we're not spending a lot of money out of it.
So so those expenditures come after the fact, right? After a tenant has been in place and it's okay. And and I'll just leave it there. I don't want to get too far out of the weeds. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Do we have any further questions, any further councilmembers? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I am a bit concerned about the the funds going to staff because I know that the the funds are limited and are not renewable. So I'm wondering, you know, if staff are hired, what is the plan in those cases to continue their funding after the ARPA funds have dried up? It it looks like this is mainly in the housing sector and then the the United Way Heading Home Plan implementation as well.
Councilmember Piedmont Piedmont Smith, I'm happy to answer what I can there is that is the question. So it sounds like maybe you're asking, if I may, about the United Way Initiative. And so are there others you'd like to hear from besides me? Just wanted to make sure you get the information here. So I can't speak for everybody, but.
Well, I guess Ms. Pfefferman as well, if she's still available.
I just might add that the mayor just came on, so maybe he's better served.
Pfefferman had to leave. And if you have questions for her, we can we can get them to her and she can respond as well in writing.
So if I may, and thank you for the question, certainly, it's a it's a question we're exceedingly attentive to because this is one time money, and we have to be very careful about creating obligations that won't be met. So virtually any place where we see any staffing, the expectation is that that project or that organization will will get itself in a position to be able to sustain that. Just as an example, the Summit Hill Land Trust, the the expectation is that they will be able to earn revenue through nonprofit housing development in the in the next few years. Certainly for the the larger amount for the Housing and Security Working Group that, and I won't speak, I'll just roughly address. I know that the two leaders there have proposed a five year plan that includes operating money sufficient for five years with the expectation that upon demonstrating success and impact that the community will have to be talking about, well, how do we keep this going? And it's it's not clear what the ongoing staffing needs would be. But I think the expectation is we all care about this a great deal. And if we find it works, we'll figure out a way to make it go. But that gives them a five year runway. On the mitigation fund, I can't go into the details of that, but all of this is focused on making sure these are sustainable programs. And maybe we can share more details on each program as we go forward to in the days ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo.
I think this question is for Director Zodi and Alex Crowley. Could you give us an estimate on how many clients you expect this funding to to help the the voucher program and the the targeted funds for the Castle community respectively?
Sure, I may just call on Amber to talk about the Housing Choice vouchers, how many typically we would would be seeking housing in a in a year. Because that's the where the success rate is measured, Amber, if you could speak to that.
We'd have to see who is coming onto the voucher program from the waitlist. But we would probably tailor it to, you know, serve no more than about 40 families. And that's really a number that we feel would have a high need and that we can appropriately do, like the tenant education and case management for that. That's a lot of work. But I think that hopefully, we can expand that based on more contributions to the fund and just being able to get the basic system in place and start operating it.
Good, thank you. Mr. Crowley, do you have an estimate?
Mine's a little bit more difficult to to calculate in 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 part. I mean, some some are easier to calculate, like the the direct employment. We made certain assumptions about hourly rate and number of hours and that sort of thing. Frankly, in that case, really, you know, the program is so successful and and positive that the more the merrier. I mean, they 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 very much, you know, so in in the other cases, we have, we we are doing partial support of a broader program. And so, you know, in in the case, so you can't really tie a dollar to a to an outcome in a in a direct way. I I would say, you know, probably all all in in terms of those segments of the of the funding that we're asking for that have support for programs, my guess is probably cumulative. It's not more than 100 or so people. But again, we're not, we're not, that's not the totality of what we're asking for. It's also not, we're not funding the entirety of a gift program. So it's just a little bit more complicated to answer.
That's that's a very good answer. Thank you for attempting. And then I just had one for Ms. Guthrie or Mr. Underwood. And that was, what do we anticipate for revenue replacement? Do we have a ballpark right now of, and and this is a dispute with the the State Board of Accounts, is that correct? Is it a large dispute or is it just sort of fine tuning?
I didn't mean to say that there was really a dispute. It's just I'll let Jeff answer.
Okay.
Yes, we do have an estimate. It's just north of $6 million.
6 million?
Yes. And that's based on a formula that the federal government included for you to allow you to go back and calculate based on 2019 revenues and how those changed. The 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 guidance that we're getting from the State Board of Accounts is not quite consistent with the guidance that we're getting with this from the federal government. Their intent was that money to be used as true replacement, which would appropriate back into the funds where you lost the revenue. The State Board of Accounts is not lined up with that yet. So we're hopeful that that inconsistency will come will go away in time for the 2022 budget presentation. Otherwise, it's it it's kind of convoluted on how we would have to.
Okay, good to know for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any further questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Smith?
I had a question for Mr. Crowley, I believe. So the deferred maintenance for the Waldron is somewhere about 550,000 allocated for. And then we're going to do a study on whether it's feasible to build a new arts venue. I mean, and I, you know, I I love going to the Waldron. I've been there many times. I love Cardinal Stage and the Arts in Bloomington. I I wondered if if the Waldron is closed down now, should we not first complete the feasibility study for a new venue and not expend the $550,000 for the Waldron when we may be building a new facility? Just just a devil's advocate question.
No, that's a good question, and I think it it merits asking. I think the 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 short answer is this, which is that there is going to be a a not insignificant period of time you know, following any kind of feasibility study before the availability of a new facility, should it come out that that the feasibility is is a positive one. The we we look at the investment that we're making in the Waldron as, first of all, something that needs to be done to the building because it's been deferred for a while, but also as a critical investment to get the the Waldron back open and operating and supporting the arts community as it's clawing its way out of the pandemic for, you know, at at least five years. So, you know, you amortize it over that period. It's 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 a great question. It's not, you know, it's not necessarily ideal, but we do think that that building ought to be. But we do think that that building ought to be maintained. And, you know, should there be a new facility in the future? Then, of course, that building becomes an asset that can be potentially reused. So I think all of it points to the fact that it does make sense to make that investment right now and and yet not slow down on the possibility of a broader play.
If if I may just add, also very important, I think, to all of us is that these were very specific recommendations from a very detailed, community based process with a committee of folks who really undertook to talk to 100 plus people and organizations and make recommendations, which very directly urged that we approve the Waldron for the next five years, but also pursue these other potential directions.
Thank you. I appreciate answers from both of you. Just trying to be good stewards of the people's money.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you. I had a question related to kind of the overarching, what I call it, the overarching plan, which I I think that's, if I'm understanding it correctly, we have sort of, for each of the four categories, a paragraph in italics that is meant to be sort of a high level plan and of things we might spend money on. And then we're supplementing that or amending it in the future with specific programs and allocations as as appropriated. So correct me if I'm wrong on that. But my question is about the third category having to do with existing infrastructure and specifically references water, sewer and broadband. And I'm wondering why it's limited to just those categories? If that's a a policy choice or if that is a ARPA requirement? And if someone could speak to why why we wouldn't want to be broad, broader than just those three types of infrastructure? If the whole point of the kind of high level plan is to keep it broad and keep options open?
I I will take that one. That is an ARPA requirement. It is a very limited infrastructure bucket. That's one of the things that the mayor was suggesting when he talked about the revenue reimbursement. That is one of the few categories, if not the only category, that is basically, woo, the door is open. It's not limited. We're just given this money. And there may be more guidance on that, but right now it is literally a calculation of a comparison of your revenues in 2020 versus 2019. It's just mathematical. So that's the kind of thing that we want to reserve for other projects that may fall into that category. And the other thing is that we're, the Congress is is working apparently on an infrastructure bill. I think I heard today that it wasn't going so well, but what's new? But that's the kind of thing also that we want to make sure we don't spend money on something when there may be other funds available that would be more appropriate and actually would allow us to use other funds more expeditiously at home.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have Councilmember P. Smith.
Yes, Ms. Guthrie may have just answered this, but I'm wondering for the revenue replacement portion, which I understand will come later at a different appropriation ordinance. But for what period? So are they just looking at revenue that we did not get in 2020? Or that was not tax year 2020 revenue? I mean, for all we know, we could go into lockdown again in two months and there may be more lost revenues. So so what is the period that we're allowed to claim lost revenues for?
I'll ask Jeff to weigh in too, but I believe it's just 20, it's a comparison.
Yeah, it was, yeah, this was a formula that the the feds, along with the legislation handed down, that allowed you to take 2019 as your baseline. Look at what your growth had been and project it out over a couple of years to say, this is what the projections were. This is what the estimated lost revenue is. And they won't take exception from an audit standpoint. If you can't use your, use those calculations to to determine your lost revenue. Now, obviously, you're right. And I think we would probably see additional funds come through. Should we go back down and do another lockdown and have issues with different funding sources as we move forward?
And if I might just add too, to thank you and for the question. In essence, this is a category to help governments, as it said, replace lost revenue. Once you calculate that number and they give you a formula to do it, you are very flexibly able to do a lot of different things with that revenue. So we're we're just, of course, anything has to be appropriated by you. But so we wanted to make sure we get that number as frankly, as good as we can get it. And then it gives us more flexibility than some of the very strict rules on the other categories that the Fed's federal government has established. And it reflects the fact that we have lost revenue. We've lost revenue in parks and in in public works and in other places too, IT. So but but it gives us great flexibility, whatever that number ends up being, that we'll work with you on.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions from council? Okay, seeing now we will go. Okay, I'm sorry, thought I saw hand. We'll go to the public or public comments. I will remind everyone, if you wish to speak, please indicate by using the raised hand function in Zoom or send our meeting host a note through chat indicating your desire to speak. The number of folks possibly speaking will allow us five minutes per speaker. Mr. Lucas, who do we have?
First up, I see someone with a screen, a screen name hep checkout, who should now be able to unmute.
Thank you. My name is actually Tonda Radawan. The screen name was from this afternoon when I was in eviction hearings. And so I wasn't able to change the name. I did have a question, and I'm not sure if this would be something that would be posed to to a fraud or potentially John Zodi or Mayor Hamilton about the possibility for, as we roll out the next possibilities for funding, if we've considered any type of tenant based rental assistance, rental assistance for those people that are facing eviction as we have the eviction moratorium set to expire in the next 10 days. My greatest concern, and most of this is based on the work that we've been doing for the past two years, assisting people that are facing homelessness, is the wonderful work that's being done right now by the service providers that are based in the continuum of care are are not actually be are able to provide the service to the people that we're seeing facing eviction. The people that we're talking to that are getting evicted tomorrow don't qualify. The people that might be evicted in seven days don't qualify. People that might have been evicted yesterday aren't quite homeless enough to qualify for these services. And that's a very large swath of people and families and children that have needs that should be met. And they just don't qualify for those services that are being provided. We all know these people. They're friends. They're neighbors. They're your constituents. And and they're being missed. I don't think that that's the fault of anybody in particular. I do think we have this unique opportunity to address their needs. And and this is a wonderful opportunity to do that. I'm not sure what my time is right now. But I would like to also address the idea, the concern about staffing and funds going to staffing. We need case management. Most of the work that we're doing here is trying to connect people with the case manager in the community that can actually help them. There's a dire need. And if what's being presented through the landlord risk management and through emergency housing vouchers and other avenues, even through the social workers at BPD is actually going to provide a real life person to help somebody navigate their issues and help them with housing. We're going to be addressing some needs in the community that haven't been met in at least 10 to 15 years that I've been aware of. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I'm I'm sorry, I didn't catch your, I heard your name, but I don't really remember it. But I just want to remind everyone that public comment is not a question and answer situation. And normally, maybe one of my colleagues will pick up on that and bring that up later in the proceedings. Just a little bit of clarity there. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
I don't see any additional requests for comment at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we'll go back to council for comments. Councilmember P. Smith, and then Councilmember Campbell.
Yes, I wanted to follow up on Ms. Radawan's question about help for for tenants who may be facing eviction at the end of this month. Perhaps Mr. Zodi or somebody else from the administration can speak to that or even the mayor, if there's other ways the city can can help in this kind of emergency situation that people are facing.
Well, I'm happy to make quick comment and others may want to add. I think the whole community is very collaborative on the issue of tenant risk. As I think most of you know, the the county government has provided through the trustee system direct cash availability for some situations like this. And of course, that covers the whole county, including all city residents, which is really very important. I think the only general comment I would make is and appreciate the advice and suggestions and and observations that were made. These are complicated issues. What we're trying to do is move investment money as quickly as we can into the hands of institutions and programs and people who can respond as effectively as possible with that that kind of collaboration going forward, whether it's the Housing and Security Group or the Landlord Mitigation Fund, which will be done very collaboratively. But they're no doubt complicated and there are a lot of good advice to be had on how best to actually put it into effect.
Thank you. Do you have anything up? I'm sorry, Councilmember Campbell, I believe you are next.
No, I was actually just going to go into comment, but it sounds like we may still have some questions.
I think we're returned to comments, but questions are acceptable.
Okay, well, I was headed toward comment. Okay, great. I'll be supporting this resolution tonight. When we all first heard about ARPA money back this spring and when we first heard the fairly staggering numbers when it about the monies we would receive, my first thought was, hooray, what a relief. My second thought was, you know, someday it's going to be three or four years from now. And I think we're going to see a divide between cities that spend this money and cities that invest this money. And I am hoping we'll fall into the latter. And as I read this plan, it sounds like we are very much headed in that direction. And so thank you to staff and to the mayor for heading us in that direction. I think I very much appreciate that. Couple of things in particular I want to mention and just applaud. Thank you for the investment that you're proposing in the Waldron and in answering the question of another arts facility and the assistance to local arts groups. I think that acknowledges that, number one, that they're front and center to quality of life. Thank you for that. But it also acknowledges that there are economic drivers in this city as well. So thank you for that. And then finally, and perhaps most significantly, I want to applaud the 1.2 million toward the work of the Housing and Security Group. I I think I'm a fundraiser and we know not to toss around the word transformational too easily. But I'm very optimistic that that group has has the ability to do some transform transformational work around a very stubborn issue. And so I applaud that investment and I look forward to watching this unfold. I look forward to hearing the next plan accompanying the next app board. So thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other members, final comments or questions?
I didn't quite hear you. Is it?
Councilmember Rallo, I'm sorry.
Okay, the volume suddenly dropped. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, just to say, I think this is a very good application of these funds. I think it's going to need infrastructure as well as supportive vulnerable populations in the community. And we clearly don't know the full extent of the pandemic. The the economic impact on the of the pandemic, but I think this is well applied. I am surprised that it's going to cost $700,000 to evaluate to find the lead piping in the community. We can only guess what that's going to cost to replace it. So but it's a it's a very important step that we need to take. So I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you. I too will be supporting this. It is an initial attempt at at doing some really serious recovery efforts that are much needed in the community. I think this is also useful that this comes on the heels of our city survey and which I think it is very clear that the arts is a part of the brand here in Bloomington, part of the quality of life that we all love and and expect to see continuing. And with respect to Councilmember Smith's concern about the Waldron, the arts community is very much in need of a home in the here and now. And so everything we can do to shore up the Waldron and get that facility, that venue up and running for all the entities that use that space, I think that is absolutely critical and a good use of these funds in the short term, even though there may be longer term plans for something even more grand and even more useful to those who make their living in the arts. And I think as we're here tonight to talk about workers' rights and employment opportunities for more of the talent in our community, it is essential that we take a look at the assets and the facilities we already have and make sure that they are viable into the future. So I do see that as an important investment with this first round of ARPA funding. So thanks to all who have helped put this together.
Thank you. Any other final comment from council members? Councilmember Flaherty, then Councilmember Smith.
Yes, thank you. And thank you to all the members of the administration or community members who weighed in and communicating this plan to us tonight. I'll be supporting it as well. I think there's a lot of good things in here that that I certainly support. And I think that are, in in some cases, good starts and hopefully something we can build on. Touched on it briefly with the Landlord Risk Mitigation Fund. That's certainly important for folks holding vouchers, but also for other folks who face discrimination based on on statuses like a criminal history or a poor rental history of some kind. So I'm hoping we can continue to build on that to work to help folks who who face discrimination based on source of income or other similar characteristics. I also think it's great that we're taking the time to invest some money in with experts who who know the the community land trust landscape well to think critically about how we want to set that up going forward. It's been talked about for a while in our community as as a need. I'd like to see a much more sizable investment in that in in that organization, the Community Land Trust ultimately, whether through ARPA funds in a year or two to come or through donations of land from the city and perhaps other public entities. But I think it's the right approach to take some time and and in planning to develop that that structure. Let's see. I think, yeah, there's some other good projects and and programs in here that a lot of us have touched on. I really do broadly support it. I have just a little bit of concern about process going forward. It it seems to me, if I'm understanding everything correctly, that the plan will be amended based on future appropriation ordinances, but but not developed or changed in advance of those appropriation ordinances. The plan, the the italicized paragraphs I mentioned earlier for the four categories is is very, very high level. Not doing a whole lot more than just sort of identifying the categories. And then an appropriation ordinance, of course, is very, very detailed. And And my preference would be that the administration and the council work together in a more collaborative fashion. And by that, I mean a little more iterative, not just, you know, a meeting where councilmembers share their view, and then we see an app board some months later. But something a little more iterative, where a resolution could be developed prior to an appropriation ordinance coming, so that we develop the plan together and then develop an appropriation ordinance based on that plan that the council may have had input in or amended in some way or changed. So, that's somewhat parallel to my thoughts about budgeting generally at the city and how I feel like sometimes appropriation ordinances are not a particularly easy opportunity for the council as the fiscal body and of the city to weigh in on fiscal priorities. So, it's a minor criticism, but something I'd like to continue thinking about and exploring as we go forward with the ARPA funds and budgeting generally. But again, thank you very much to the administration for developing this plan, for all the input they took from folks and for sharing that all tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I just wanted to express my appreciation to the administration to help, when they help clarify some of those questions I asked. I try to ask tougher questions in my mind that have to do with funding and expenditures. And I appreciate it because those are things I didn't really understand, and it was clarified. So, thank you. I'll be supporting this ordinance, this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further final comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Pete Mon Smith.
Yes, thank you. I will also be supporting this resolution with the initial spending plan. I agree with Councilmember Flaherty that I think it would be to the benefit of the community as a whole for the council and the administration to collaboratively come up with revisions to the spending plan from the get-go, rather than just responding to future appropriation ordinances. So, hopefully, that collaboration can take place and continue. The input onto this, into this initial plan and the app order that'll be read into the record in a few minutes was of a type that is, I don't know what Councilmember Flaherty means by iterative, but I think there's room for improvement, let me say, in the manner of discussing funding priorities for ARPA funds and for the city funds in general. So, I appreciate having more conversations with the mayor's administration about that as we move forward. This initial proposal for use of the ARPA funds is excellent, especially the emphasis on housing issues. Having served on the Housing and Security Working Group and the Promising Practices Committee of that group, I can say that in addition to the 1.2 million for the updated Heading Home Plan implementation, there are some other categories. I mean, the Landlord Risk Mitigation Fund is something that we saw in other communities as a helpful thing through our work on the Housing and Security Task Force, as well as, you know, the land trust idea that the BHA is going to be studying. So, there really are a few line items that go hand in hand with what the Housing and Security Working Group has been researching and learning about this spring and put in their recommendation report that came out last week. So, I'm very pleased to see that. And I guess that's it for now. I think that in addition to focus on housing, I think another issue and expense category that goes hand in hand with that is mental health care, because they almost always go hand in hand. And people in our community experiencing homelessness, almost all of them have mental health issues. So, I know that health is more the domain of the county government, but I'll definitely be following up on investments of ARPA funds in that direction as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further final comments from councilmembers? Okay, seeing none, my comments are that I will be supporting this resolution. And there's been very good comments from my colleagues and from the public. And I think it's very important that we consider a more collaborative approach in the future. I'm not quite sure how that'll happen. There are some moving parts, there are still some uncertainty from the federal government, from the State Board of Accounts. So, there's still going to be some time for these things to kind of gel. But one of the things that I think me and council leadership can do is, as we get information from administration or others, then we would do our best to make sure that everyone on this body is informed and able to participate more without getting too micromanaging. But I still think it's important. I also think it's important to understand that, those of us that don't out in the public, that ultimately, it's this body that approves the appropriations. So, there will be more opportunity for us to discuss some things, maybe get in the weeds with some things, but understand transformative is a word with these one-time fundings. So, I think we'll be very deliberative in order to do what's best for this community. Looking forward to working with everyone. Lastly, I also want to thank the public folks that spoke this evening or had some input. Ms. Rock Pfefferman, Ms. Tina Peterson, who wasn't present but are working hard in this community, and the words from Ms. Galvin with words with regard to the arts community and that process. So, I think that's very helpful from our standpoint. Okay, having said that, seeing no more comments from council. Are we ready for the question? Seeing no more comments, will the clerk please call the roll for ordinance? I'm sorry, Resolution 21-25.
Yes, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambolory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
And Flaherty?
Yes.
Thank you very much. The resolution is adopted 9-0. Okay, I do believe we have legislation for first readings this evening. Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, President Sims, I move that appropriation ordinance 21-01 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Okay.
It's been properly moved in the second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambolory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
And Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that motion passes. For the clerk, please read.
Appropriation ordinance 2101 to appropriate from the ARP Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, IFA Coronavirus Relief Fund, General Fund, and Parks and Recreation General Fund expenditures for purposes that fulfill the intent of the American Rescue Plan Act in aid of the City of Bloomington's recovery from the effects of the COVID-19 emergency. The synopsis is as follows. Its ordinance appropriates funds from the ARP Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund for the purposes set forth in the ARPA Community Investment Plan and from the IFA Coronavirus Relief Fund, General Fund, and Parks and Recreation General Fund for additional expenditures the city will make to aid the community's recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you very much. And I would like to refer this appropriation ordinance 21-01 to the committee of the whole next week, July 28th, commencing at 6:30 PM. I will move to additional public comment this evening. This is set aside a maximum of 25 minutes for this section. Please indicate through the raised hand function in Zoom if you intend to speak or send a note to our meeting host via the chat function. And it looks like we can allow five minutes for our public speakers. Who do we have, Mr. Lucas?
First up is Greg Alexander.
Hi, thanks. My name's Greg Alexander. I'm here to talk to you about the Cascades Trail. You know, I don't really know how much you know, so I'll start at the beginning. The Cascades Trail has been in transportation plans for more than a decade. The 2008 Greenway Systems Plan, the 2011 Journey to Platinum Plan, the 2012 Bike Ways Implementation Plan. The transportation planners said they wanted it to connect four different parks' properties to each other and to North High School, and most crucially, to existing bike and ped facilities on College Avenue, which are pretty poor, but okay, at least it's a connection. But though it's been planned and funded as a transportation facility, it's always been administered by Parks and Rec because they're good at asking for money. An engineering consultant split their out up into five phases costing an estimated $4 million. They decided to build the useless parts first. That's what happens when Parks and Rec oversees transportation infrastructure. The first three of the five phases are built, but phases four and five are stalled. We've been building it for a decade, and it literally doesn't connect to a single piece of bike or ped infrastructure anywhere in the city. It doesn't connect to anything. It is an island path. That's what phase four and phase five were supposed to finish off. I don't know what the holdup is with phase four. I was just there an hour ago looking at it. It's not even begun, but this council funded phase five. In 2018, you passed the Bicentennial Parks Bonds, which gave $2.1 million to finish phase five to connect to the city's transportation network at College Avenue. They said specifically they would provide bike and ped infrastructure between College Avenue and the rest of the trail. Starting last March, they began a pilot project where they converted Old 37 to a trail by obstructing car through traffic. Without spending any money to speak of, they provided more than half the length of phase five overnight, and it's been great. All year, my nine-year-old has been riding his bike all the way from our house to the Griffey Dam. I never would have done that before with the speeding cars on that stretch of road. I wish it was more useful as an actual transportation connection, but it truly is great to have any low-stress connection at all, and it better be great. We have already paid for it. And since they decided to reuse the existing asphalt, it meant they could spend the majority of the bond on internal improvements to the park. That's exactly what they have already done, spending $1.5 million this summer on erosion control and an accessible boardwalk all the way to the waterfall. Out of the $2 million bond, half a million dollars remain, just enough money to complete some sort of sidewalk connection between the southern end of the pilot project and College Avenue. It was a plausible plan, and it was finally getting close to having that first bit after a decade of construction that would actually connect to other facilities. But that all came to an end on June 22nd, a month ago, when park staff unilaterally decided to cancel the pilot and announced they would not provide a bike and ped facility between the Cascades Playground and College Avenue. After already taking millions of dollars across four different funding phases, they simply decided to abandon the linchpin of the whole trail. What was slated to be a transportation facility is now reduced to just another amusement for parks users. The one useful connection they told you they would provide between College Avenue and North High School has been administratively canceled by the Director of Parks and Rec. They took the money, they decided not to do the work. That's bullcrap. You guys need to stop pretending you're funding bike and ped infrastructure when you're really just feeding the Parks Department money incinerator. They simply took the money and spent it on something else instead. It's shameful they would defraud this council that way, and shame on you if you let them get away with it. And while you're at it, actually spend some money on pedestrian transportation already. Fully fund a bare minimum sidewalk network. People are walking in the streets, and you're still borrowing millions for parks. When people say, you guys spent millions of dollars on these trails, and it didn't amount to anything, it's because you did. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Do we have anyone else, Mr. Lucas?
No, I don't believe so. Thank you.
Okay, seeing none. Next thing on our agenda is matters of council schedule. Okay, Mr. Lucas, what do you have for us?
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of items that I think might require council action. The first is that the council has a work session scheduled for this Friday, and I don't believe there will be any new items of legislation ready to come forward to you all in the upcoming cycle. As you are all well aware, the August 4 regular session in two weeks has been set aside for consideration and public hearings on annexation-related ordinances. So, given that there aren't any other items of legislation coming forward, the council might want to consider a motion to cancel this Friday's work session.
Councilmember Flaherty.
I move that the council cancel its work session scheduled for Friday, July 23rd.
Okay.
Thank you. Been properly moved in the second. Mr. Lucas, is that a roll call?
Yes, I believe so.
So, will the clerk please call the roll, please?
Give me just a quick moment. Okay, Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambolory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And Smith?
Yes. Thank you very much. That motion passes 9-0. Mr. Lucas?
Thank you. Yes, just one more item. As I just mentioned, the August 4 council meeting has been scheduled as an opportunity to conduct public hearings on the annexation proposals that would start at 3:00 PM that day. Just as a reminder, the meeting will be conducted as a hybrid meeting where members of the public can either attend in person or via Zoom. We certainly encourage everyone who can attend virtually to do so to help limit the spread of COVID. But the council might want to consider conducting that meeting as a special session rather than a regular session for the purpose of getting right to the public hearings on the annexation ordinances and not have any other agenda items beyond those matters. So, if the council agrees, a motion could be made to conduct that August 4 meeting as a special session rather than a regular session.
Councilmember Vol, I'm sorry, Councilmember Flaherty.
I move that the council's August 4 meeting be conducted as a special session, starting at 3:00 PM rather than a regular session.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I hope I didn't mess up anything. Councilmember Vol, you had your hand up.
Well, I was going to make that motion, but I was going to add that we set an end time of 9:00 PM for that same meeting. That's going to be the subject of a second motion, so I'll wait till this motion is disposed of.
Exactly. Thank you. Okay, it's been properly moved in the second to have a special session on August 4 as opposed to a regular session. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Nicole, you're muted.
Sorry, I just saw it. Yes, Councilmember Rallo.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambolory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Sandberg?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that motion passes 9-0.
Yes, I'd like to move that next week's special session have an end time of 9:00 PM and a 30-minute recess that would begin at 5:45 PM. I need a second.
Second.
Well, let's have a little discussion for that. And first of all, thank you, Councilmember Volin. We had a little brief discussion on that, and I think it was a good idea. I have talked with our council staff as well as the vice president and leadership, which we could have included parliamentarian in some of those discussions as well. But what you did is exactly what we were going to propose. The only difference is that we wanted to have like a five or ten-minute break every two hours throughout that evening. So just wanted to say that. So can you please repeat your motion that you made and that was seconded?
The, this, again, simply put, this is to limit the meeting to five and a half hours total. Instead of two breaks of fifteen minutes each, although I'm amenable to that, I was proposing one break of thirty minutes that would allow people to, to eat a meal without rushing. And that generally speaking, as long as we're limiting to five and a half hours and that we take a break somewhere in there, I think it would allow everyone who attends the meeting to get through it more easily. But I'm happy to discuss whether to split that break into two breaks.
During discussion from my colleagues, Councilmember Rallo?
Well, it's, I'm not opposed to an end time, but without structuring a motion to structure debate, determining what, how much time each individual has to speak, what, how will we?
If I could.
Yeah, you know, I can imagine hundreds of people turning out.
Okay, well, that's the thing is, we're not going to know because of our, you know, the, the, the way, the policies we currently have towards running meetings. We don't ask people to sign up in advance to speak, so we're not going to know until the day of how many people will come. There are three outcomes. One is there are not so many people that we can't get done in six hours. There are as many people as we can get done in six hours or close, or there's an extraordinary number of people and there's no way we could hear them all in six hours. I think that the president has, you know, made clear that we're, we have an obligation to hear everyone who wants to speak. And we know as a body that we can't be up all night. So we're preparing for the possibility of a second meeting or rather a continuation of the special session. It could be continued through a recess. But we just don't know that until we know how many people plan to speak. And so we have, we, we don't have any other mechanism right now except to wait and see. But frankly, I don't think that the number of people who come to speak justifies the meeting going indefinitely. We're going to allot five and a half hours. And if we need more nights to hear everybody who wants to speak, then we'll schedule them. But that's the only tool we have right now.
Thank you, Councilmember Volin. Could, I, I'd like to ask Council President Sims if that is the council leadership's intent to schedule additional special sessions if needed? Or continuation?
That has been talked about in our scheduling session. If there is a need to continue that, then it will be the next night, August fifth. But we haven't gotten to that point yet. Don't think we'll get there to see him, Mr. Lucas. I don't know. But that's been part of the discussion. And there's been a broad discussion with this public hearing, and I will add that this has, it isn't council leadership with regard to public comment. I mean, we all want public comment. But legally, statutorily, anyone who is part of this meeting and wants to be heard legally has to be heard one way or another. So trying to incorporate all that into our council schedule. And many of us mentioned process. I mean, it's not quite that cut and dryer, that easy. So we've anticipated before this motion to start at three, which we have already been aware of, and it's been noticed. Periodic breaks and to have a hard stop time at nine PM and then continue on the next night as needed. It was a smart move, I think, and, and thank the parliamentarian to make this a special session. So that way we, I'll, I'll have a statement to read, but then we'll get immediately into public comment. And we also anticipate, at least at the beginning, that public comment will be allowed three minutes per person.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
That, that's the plan. I mean, it's, it's, you know, we, we've talked, and I've talked to some of you individually. Two minutes here, you know, what, you know, but we think that five is a good, I'm sorry, three minutes is a good middle row to hear from our public, and that's, let's face it, that's really what this is about. So I think there's a motion, I'm sorry, Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes, with respect to giving the public advanced notice of our process here, I would just like to suggest that anyone speaking for like a large number of people to make it clear that maybe they are speaking on behalf of a certain area or a certain parcel within the, the areas being annexed, that they maybe have a show of hands either through the Zoom or if they're attending in person. You know, how many people are here who also have the same point of view? And that may cut down a little bit on the numbers of people that may be lining up either at the podium or lining up in a Zoom meeting to speak. And to also be aware that it is quite possible if we do have many people who wish to speak that the meeting will be extended to Thursday evening. Do we have an idea when that meeting might possibly start?
If we went to Thursday, the discussion has been regular time, six thirty. And part of my opening statement on August the fourth, part of that was to remind the folks if there was more or a group of people, then we would strongly suggest that they do that. But I think we've done that in many other meetings. We, we think some people listen, many will not. But that is part of the opening statement process in order to prompt folks to be as efficient and as possible with public comments. Not so sure at this point how effective that'll be, but I think there will be some. I think we have some real cognizant people in our community.
I just think to, I excuse me, I just think it's important since the August fourth meeting has been on the books for quite a while. That's the mini, meeting that I think the majority of people who are concerned and want to come out and speak will be coming out. And so I just want to make as advanced notice as we possibly can as to how we plan on organizing this discussion. So it's fair to the public. Thanks.
Well, thank you. And the plan is not to even go into August the fifth. The plan would be hopefully to get through it on the fourth. But we're not sure. We've been through this a couple of times before and special sessions, that sort of thing. But thank you, Councilmember Sandberg. Yes, Councilmember Volin?
With the prompts that we're going to have to give at the beginning and throughout the meeting with the fact that some people will not use their full three minutes, but other people will take more time due to Zoom issues or, you know, just the usual movement back and forth between the microphone. It's a safe thing to assume that we're going to be able to hear with three minutes per person approximately a hundred speakers on August the fourth. If we were to go to two minutes, we could hear a hundred and fifty speakers. But I think the key thing is going to be if there are going to be a hundred people or more speaking on August fourth, then we should expect from the beginning of that meeting that we're probably going to need a, a second meeting. I seriously doubt that we're going to have more than two hundred speakers, but I think a hundred is a possibility. So at least this number should go out to people that based on our experience, this amount of time we set aside will accommodate a hundred speakers. So maybe that will help people plan accordingly. Anyway, that's my thought on the motion.
Okay, I'm not so sure what I got out of that two minutes here or whatever.
We could, we could move Mr. President.
I understand that we can make that motion on the fourth. I mean, I'm trying to explain that to you. We walked through all this as best we can. It is impossible for us today to anticipate that on the fourth. So you generally do it with a show of hands. We're trying to anticipate the volume. And, and also to have a, a, a plan of action should we extend. And we'll start with three. That's what we're talking here. We can have a motion to reduce it to two on the fourth. I mean, there, there's other ways to, to manage this is what I'm saying. And on July twenty-first, to have a concrete schedule, if you will. I'm not so sure it's the best way to go. But that's why we have talked about the hard stop time. I want to be cognizant of our colleagues as well as part of this discussion from council leadership. And I don't, I'm okay if she don't have anything, but do you have anything to add, Councilmember Scambolory?
Yes, actually. Do, a, a question first. I think this is a Mr. Lucas question. Let's say we get, first of all, I'm a fan of having a stop time. I think that makes good sense for, from our perspective, from the public's perspective. Mr. Lucas, let's say we get to nine o'clock or whatever our stop time is, and there's two people left who want to offer comment. Is, is there a mechanism for just extending it just so those two people can offer comment and we could close out the evening? Is that, is there a mechanism for that on, on?
Yes, and Councilmember Volin could, could also respond if you'd like, but it would simply take another motion approved by a majority of the council to, to extend that time.
Okay, okay. And that's what I thought. And then in terms of establishing a stop time and a time for breaks or a number of breaks or things like that, is there any advantage or disadvantage to doing that tonight versus doing that on August four?
I could let Councilmember Volin answer that. I, I, you know, personally, you know, some folks might like to plan. Certainly if, you know, the intent was to allow folks to plan dinner and have time to eat, that, that might be helpful, certainly letting the public know ahead of time if, if the council intends to take a half an hour break, if, you know, you have folks that show up during that time period who are, you know, not sure what's going on or why the meeting's not, you know, taking place. You know, if we know in advance that we are expecting to take breaks like that, it would be good to let folks know. So I could see the benefit of advanced notice.
And by that, you mean making a decision this evening?
Well, I, I think if, if the council wants to take a half an hour recess, letting folks know tonight wouldn't hurt anything, certainly. I could see some folks, you know, still attending on August the fourth and not, not knowing. So I'll, I'll let Councilmember Volin speak to, you know, the, the intent of that.
Is it my turn to speak?
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yes, Councilmember Volin, please do.
Mr. Lucas speaks for me very well, as usual. The point is to advertise in advance that there will be a start and end time and that there will be a break time. I thought that was obvious. I thought that the benefit of that was obvious to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a motion on the floor. I think we've had discussion. Can you please repeat your motion in its entirety, please?
I move that the meeting of August fourth be limited to nine PM with a half-hour recess between five forty-five and six fifteen. Are there any other questions I can answer about it?
Do we have any further questions from council? Okay, it's been properly moved in second. The clerk, please call the roll motion, please.
Councilmember Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambolory?
Sorry, yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
And Rallo?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Volin. That motion passes nine zero. Do we have anything else on the council schedule matters, Mr. Lucas?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We are now to adjournment. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
And move we adjourn?
Second.
Thank you. Been properly moved in second. My colleagues have a great night and we'll see you soon. Thank you very much.